Hey Jeff, how are you doing?
Hi Barry.
And you know Marshall has accepted a position with the, so this week will be his last one.
Where's he going to now?
The county, he'll be the county engineer.
Yeah. Well, they got a lot going on right now.
Uh, yeah.
Check, one, two. Testing, one, two.
Is it good?
Okay, good evening, everybody. Are, is everybody hearing me okay?
No.
Okay, they're not hearing me out here. Okay, now? Better? Okay. Okay, let me, there we go. We got it? All right, very good. Well, thank you for coming out to our July 6th Hendersonville Regional Planning Commission meeting tonight and hope everybody had a wonderful holiday weekend. And we're gonna go ahead and get started here and I'm gonna ask Commissioner Stringfellow if she'll open us up in a word of prayer.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank, thank you so much for this day and thank you for this weather, even though it's hot, thank you that it is beautiful outside. And Lord, I pray that you'll be with us tonight as planning commissioners that we will listen to what has to be said and that we will make the right decisions that we should make for the Hendersonville. And Lord, I ask that you just be with everyone in here that will be just cohesive and, and as we move along in the, in the meeting. Thank you for this time together.
Amen, thank you. And tonight, we'd like to note it that there is a, all commissioners are here except for Mr. Hardcastle. And so, we have nine commissioners present, which means it will take a majority to pass, which would be six, on the land use plan and five on any other amendment that we would have before us. Tonight, the first area of order of business is our public hearing, but let me just take just a second as the chairman and do something that we don't normally do here, but it's a special night. We have in the room our, of course, our planning director Keith Free and his wife Susan's here. And tonight is their 25th anniversary.
Oh.
I mean, talk about devotion to the job. Oh, boy, well, they said they're gonna go get some ice cream afterwards, so that's our cue to not go long tonight, so. Or the agenda's gonna be doubled next time, so we'll see. But tonight, we're gonna get started with our public hearing and let me just make a couple of comments. You know, first of all, we're no stranger, the planning commission's no strangers to public hearings of this size. We have had several over the years that I can remember and we very much care about your comments. We care about what you have to say. It's very important to us as, so that we can have all the information before us. Now, having said that, let me just say that, you know, we did have, here's the situation, we had a public hearing last month and we heard many of the comments that obviously were related to traffic, were related to, some related to schools, some were related to the density, and there were other things that were mentioned about traffic. And so, these are all comments that we are aware of and that we know. And certainly, you know, if there's other things we can add to the discussion tonight, we wanna do that. But at the other side of the coin, you know, I think that, let's just stipulate tonight that the planning commission is aware of many of the comments that were made and we've received numerous emails from people over the past month and the previous month stating opposition to this particular submittal. Having said that, though, we do have, are you ready for this? We have 31 speakers tonight. Now, that sounds good to clap to. But let me just say that brevity needs to be what we, what we talk about here. And if your comments tonight are anything that I've mentioned right now, about the traffic, about density, but we are looking for things that we can add to the discussion that will help us. Now, the other part of this tonight is, once we have these comments, we fully intend to vote on this, but we are going to give the developer the right to give us a full presentation. And they're gonna sit here patiently and listen tonight to your comments and I would really ask that we do the same as they give their presentation tonight. The planning commission, the planning commission is going to do its duty tonight and we're going to make sure we got everything taken care of, but we wanna go forward with order. Now, let me just ask this, I know that there are some signs out there, I would appreciate if you would not hold those up, mainly because of people that are behind you. We know what they say and we're, we've seen the T-shirts here, I didn't really get a, I didn't get a T-shirt, so we'll, I don't know, man. Let me see how the vote goes tonight, you know. Oh, boy. I better, I better to put this down to laughter. But listen, we, we wanna hear your comments tonight, but I think it would be in order for the planning commission, since we do have so many speakers tonight, I think it would be in order for the commission to consider, I would entertain a motion that we would limit comments to up to five minutes. And so, move Ms. Longmire, do we have a second? Second by Ms. Stringfellow, any more discussion? Okay, I think we can do this by voice vote tonight, all in favor, say aye? Aye, any opposed? No, okay, carries. So, we're gonna move forward with that and once again, if you hear the comments that you, that you're making, we've got your name here, I'm gonna call the names out, each one of the names. But if you would choose to give, to what we would call yield your time back, that would be great, okay? Thank you very much. All right, so, having said that, tonight, we're gonna go with, I think it's Prabhan and Mary Hydeman. And you're first up. Pardon me? Well, yield your time, though. Thank you, I appreciate you so much. John Prentis.
Mr. Altizer, if you keep the timer going.
All rumors to the contrary, I will start to say in five minutes.
Thank you.
But don't count this part.
Timer's going right now.
Don't count this part, I have to say happy anniversary to the honeymooners and I say honeymooners, cuz I've got number 55.
All right. The chair will allow you to do that.
There are two pieces carrying tonight, I think. The first one has to do with the land use plan that the developer has requested a change to and to have this property rezoned Old Town. An observation, and I'm pretty sure every one of you know that you're in the midst of selecting a consultant to conduct a study of the entire Old Town corridor. It would be my position that it would be entirely inappropriate to make any change, plus, minus, up, down, sideways, to anything to do to Old Town until you get that done. It only seems to be rational. Having said that, moving on to the proposal at hand, it's reasonably obvious, they really don't want Old Town anyway. The changes made from last month to this month, or what I believe three or four, one is take a story off the building, left the units the same, and you guys know all this, it's all in the staff report. I am a little puzzled how you keep the units the same, but saw a whole floor off, a little puzzled about that one, and shuffled the one, two, and three bedrooms around to have more three bedrooms available. Doesn't seem to me to be aimed at the 55-plus market to do that, just my, my viewpoint. The emergency entrance was added. Fire department will tell you, and they already have, require no more than a 10% slope. Now, in my checkered past, I was a surveyor. Granted, it was a long time ago, but high is still high and low is still low and looking at those drawings, they're not gonna get 10% coming from anywhere on that side. If they can beat 20, I'd be surprised because they're showing, the rendering still show the building at a nice dead level plane, level street all the way around it, that's not level ground. High's gotta come down some, low's gotta come up some, somehow, some way, if they even get close to that, plus they still show the six-foot retaining wall around three sides of it. The traffic study that was added was interesting. One of the things I noted missing, well, two things actually, one was no mention made of the 65 or so housing units about to come online just a little bit north on Sanders Ferry Road. There's three occupied and another 60-odd under construction, most of which are already sold. As well, I saw, I saw no mention of the impact on Gallatin Road, which is interesting because if you're coming off of this peninsula, you got two choices. Well, on Ferry, Saunders Ferry, you got only one choice, if you're gonna go anywhere, you're gonna get on Main Street. And Main Street is bad. That's as nice as I can be about it. The several pages of improvements they showed to Sanders Ferry Road, oh, I'd love those, they're long needed, they're needed without this development. Only problem is, you gotta get Corps approval and they so noted, they're not taking responsibility, it's up to you to get Corps approval. The Corps won't even look at it until there's engineering drawings done and then it's gonna take them a while because it's not approved here in Hendersonville. That's gotta go way upstream and back downstream through several different departments. And even if you had that approval today, there's absolutely no way all that construction could be done in the timeframe these buildings will be built. It's just, that's an extremely complicated piece of roadwork there when you start having to fill lake, take stuff out of the lake, all that stuff, it's not quick, it's not easy. The, the variances, as I mentioned, there in staff comments are all still there, maximum density's still a ridiculous 46, lot coverages still exceeds, building height came down a little, still 30 feet too high. The whole bottom line is, or one other thing I mentioned, those common areas, I don't care what you call this, what zoning you call it, this is multifamily. I mean, it is. In some way, shape, form, or fashion, it ought to conform to multifamily. One key part of that is open space requirements. Multifamily requires 35%. They calculate 25.5%. I gotta question that, too. I mean, you look at the calculations, what they counted on their drawing, first of all, they count that little bitty tiny strip around three sides of it, that's, I'll be generous, five feet wide, I don't think it's that wide, but let's be generous. It's also either at the top or the bottom, you can't tell from the drawings, of a six-foot retaining wall. Now, exactly how is that usable open space? And our code defines open space as usable and defines the things it needs to be used for, that's gotta go away. Then they have the traffic islands, the, the light poles, little area around here, they're counting that, little flower beds at the front entrance, they're counting that, retention ponds, they're counting that, okay? Come on, guys. They're gonna, if they're gonna build something, they gotta follow the rules. Bottom line is, this thing deserves a no. Not anymore, hey, we only just learned, hey, we forgot, hey, we need more time, this deserves a flat-out no tonight.
Nathan Green.
Quickly and briefly, to preserve time for everyone, my name is Nathan Green, I'm a resident of Sanders Ferry. Before I begin, I wanted to thank all the citizens that have joined here to voice your concerns, just as the chairman had mentioned, let's make sure we stay on point tonight. As much as we're all emotional about this, let's make sure we stay on point, let's make sure it's information that they can use to strike this thing down. My, my pure objective here today is to show why this is a terrible idea, not only for our community, but for the city and, and for the county at large. I'm a Sanders Ferry Peninsula resident, I've lived here for 12 years with my family, I've had family on the peninsula for almost 40 years. I grew up in Tennessee, I graduated from the University of Tennessee. When my wife and I chose to find a place to live, we chose this peninsula instead of Franklin or Murfreesboro or Brentwood or Green Hills or Bellevue because we wanted a slower town, we wanted less traffic, we wanted less crime. When we, when we decided to start our family in this community, we wanted the schools because they were not overcrowded and they were safe and clean and diverse. As I stated, this is a bad move for all of us. Within our own community, over the last 10 years, we've seen concession after concession for progress. We've, and, and time after time, we've seen this lead to taxpayers carrying more burden while few individuals walk away rich. We have repeatedly seen inaccurate data and information be used as the grounds to persuade our elected officials that they were acting in good faith and we have seen our communities trust these promises to their own detriment, time and time and time again. It has been common practice to bully our elected officials, threaten them, chastise residents as stupid and ignorant or anti-progress while shoveling unrealistic promises down the throats of our citizens. While our communities fill to capacity, our firefighters get stretched thin, our police officers are overwhelmed by new crime, increased crime, while our teachers struggle to teach classes that are ever-growing with dwindling resources and lost time, and while our citizens add 10 to 20 minutes a day to their daily lives for the rest of their lives, struggling to make changes in their daily schedules for sports and church schedules to accommodate more traffic while a few individuals get rich. When these developers moved in and they decided to purchase property, they knew exactly what the zoning laws were, they knew exactly what they were purchasing.
I, I really need to ask the audience, please don't respond, just let's let the speaker speak.
My apologies, Mr. Chairman. When the land was purchased, as I said, they knew exactly what they were purchasing. Their plan all along has been to bully us, to change our laws. The proposal in front of the committee today follows an all-too-familiar playbook. It only takes a few moments of reading the request for variances to the zoning laws to find huge flaws in the data gathering methodology and to see the glaring inconsistencies within the proposal. For this reason alone, the project should be denied outright. The traffic study that was done was during the global pandemic. The notion that this data would be an accurate projection of expectations of volumes is an insult to logic. It would be the equivalent of choosing the size of a new sports stadium based on game attendance in 2020, or perhaps we should project how many travelers we'll have in 2022 based off how many airline passengers there were in 2020. I'm curious if the group proposing this data as accurate expected us to miss this glaring oversight. The financial projections are also flawed, I won't go into those for, to say for time, but I will say this, if the committee takes the most conservative estimates of increased costs, this project, this project is already over 40% over budget. What assurances do we have from financial institutions, do we have as a community? What assurances and financial insurance do we have against this becoming a derelict project, as has happened in the past 10 years? In order for us to move forward, it would be prudent to have their bankers come forward and show the money. It also would be prudent for them, for the same institutions to commit to a certain level of protection against going over budget. We should demand that any and all potential scenarios are vetted and funded by the entity asking our community to write an entirely new zoning law. Since there is no bank that will stand up and commit to this money and since the developers will never put the money in escrow to guarantee their promises are met, this project must be denied. Additionally, the very optimistic taxes supposedly generated by the developer's proposal would not come close to covering the added burden on our police, fire, ambulance service, not to mention schools, roads, or parks and recreational areas. There's been no environmental impact study, there's been no ecological impact study, we have no idea to know how long we're gonna, I, I'll finish up now, but I'll finish by saying this, we have no idea what the, what the runoff from the, from these projected projects are, we don't know what the impact is gonna be to our, our traffic, we don't know what the impact is gonna be to our services and everything else. We have to take on from them that they, they're promising to us and we just have to accept it. We have to trust them. So, all I'm asking the committee and the commission here today is to think back to the one time that they can find, one example that they can find where developers have made fool on lofty costly promises, just once. For every one of those, I've got 10,000 examples of times when they haven't. The notion that they can chastise our, our, our committee and also the founding fathers of this community as stupid or short-sighted, like we were some kind of hillbilly country bumpkins that didn't know what was coming down the pipeline, we know exactly what's coming down the pipeline. These individuals will get rich and the rest of us will suffer the burden for the rest of our lives as long as we, as long as we decide to live on this peninsula. I apologize for running over on time, but it's obvious this is a no vote for everyone on the committee, thank you for your time.
Henry Minaldino.
My name's Henry, lived in Hendersonville for 21 years. I express my support for the project. The peninsula's been neglected for almost 20, 30 years now, nothing's been done. I think we need to do something to make it better. As far as the roads, they've been neglected. It's gonna take a bunch of years before they get fixed again. Developers come in here with a bunch of money, they're gonna try to make things good, make things real nice for everybody, not just them. The building's not gonna hurt the neighborhood, in fact, it would, in fact, it would stimulate, stimulate for all local business and accessibility for more people to the lake. The developers have, have all traffics and safety concerns that they already did and, and I'm not even gonna talk about that because y'all already heard it 20 times already, so. There's a lot of people that don't wanna talk because of, they wanna remain silent, but they're for the project, okay? I hope you guys consider this, I hope you guys consider the vote for an approval because the town really needs it. It really does, you know? I come from a big city. Okay? Yeah, I come from a big city. This city's not a small city anymore. This city is not a small city. It's a pretty big city now, okay? You gotta go with times, not go backwards.
Thank you, Mr. Minaldino. Okay, the next one is, I'm guessing it's, is it Barbara Roberts? Ms. Roberts?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Barbara Roberts and I've been a real estate agent. For Simply Home, I've been a real agent for 16 years, 11 years of the 16 years in Sumner County and the surrounding areas. I'm here tonight to support the developers about this amazing, amazing project to be built on Saunders Ferry. I was also the agent that represented them on the purchase of this land. I was here at the last planning commission meeting and heard all of your concerns. It's just a shame that you have not heard the It's just a shame that you have not heard the developer before all this negativism about his development. I want to talk tonight about the positive attributes this project will do for not only Saunders Ferry, but the city of Hendersonville itself. Number one, the development will not only enhance the surrounding properties, but also increase the market value of your current home. The developer is willing to improve the roads on Saunders Ferry and mitigate any negative impact on traffic due to this project. And he's going to review that with you tonight. The developers are willing to make upgrades to Mallard Point Park to include park benches, fountain, landscaping, boat ramp, and additional fill from the project on 216 to help reduce the amount of flooding as we know that floods continuously during the heavy rains. I also was just aware they also going to put a fishing pier. This presented additional off-site amenities to the residents for this project. The developers are proposing $3,500 per unit for city contribution. These funds are to be used for improvements to the future multi-use path and also an additional roadway improvement, which is a sum of over $1 million to give back to the community. The developers are willing to assist with the development of the future greenway extension project that's been neglected for quite some time. This will be the premiere of 55 older communities in Hendersonville. 55 and older communities are booming across the United States are in high demand. I hope with this additional information tonight puts a different perspective on the value of this project and its residents. In total, this is a win-win, not only for the residents of the area, but also for win for the city of Hendersonville because the tax increase enhanced the beauty of Saunders Ferry. I hope, considering all this information I have given you, voting in favor of this beneficial project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. The next one is Stephen Puckett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Stephen Puckett. I reside at 228 Saunders Ferry Road, apartment age 21. So I quite literally live next to this location and have very unique information on it. There are major issues with this. And in fact, there are so many problems with the zoning request itself that, quite honestly, it would be used in the basics of planning class as an example of what to reject and why to reject it. Because most, the major issues center around the very economics of the property itself. The first one being that this development being OTR instead of something like MXC would be openly hostile to our lake-based tourism economy. Right now, the lake-based tourism economy during its peak times is actually using the property itself as overflow parking for Mallard Point. So by making the proposed improvements to Mallard Point that the developer is claiming would actually take the issue of parking at Mallard Point and turn it into a crisis to the point where I would expect, I would project in less than five years, we would have to create a new flex unit within our law enforcement to address off-site parking issues, overflow parking issues and consequences with neighboring properties. So this is really a key, a major problem. The second is that it would actually undercut our sales tax potential for the city, given that this property being tied to lake-based tourism would negatively impact our city's commercial capacity. And especially when it comes to lake-based tourism, which carried us through the pandemic and kept us from having to raise taxes. And so, and so not only is this development not, you know, pursuing residential instead of capitalizing on this overflow issue from Mallard Point and getting residuals for the city, is actually going the opposite direction and being a detriment to the city in which the standards for changing our land use plan is that it be a benefit instead of a detriment. And in fact, that's why, you know, the developer's already shown with a previous proposal before you at the 248 property of the concept of pairing properties, where in 248, his objective was to pair the commercial capacity of 248 with the marina. Apparently, the developer either does not, apparently thinks that folks that use the boat ramp don't have money, I guess. The thing, and so that's a critical, that's a critical issue for our economy that would undercut us. And I haven't even gotten into Hotel Motel, which use, you know, tapping into the tourism, we have vehicles that I've seen every day come down, go back, and, you know, three times over a weekend or in four times if it's a holiday weekend. So going with lake-based tourism-centered commercial would actually be a more beneficial aspect as opposed to OTR, which OTR in any type of pure residential would be the worst decision for this property. And as I said, would be ultimately a detriment. And the thing is, with all the proposed improvements, there's an old saying that says, "All the sugar and sweeteners in the world doesn't change the fact that poison is still poison." And this development request is poison to the city and its economy. As such, as has joined Mr. Prentice in saying, this needs to be voted down completely. No negotiating around the edges or anything yet. You know, we can discuss plans. We can discuss design and things like that when the right zoning request is before us. Because right now, the issue is the zoning request itself because of its overly restrictive nature. The other aspect I want to touch on is the traffic study. Of course, out of season, you know, out of season and of course during the pandemic. The pandemic can be factored if there's baseline testing. But, okay. And, well, I do want to hit on two other quick points.
Okay, your time is up.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Stephen Wilson?
Thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Stephen Wilson. My family and I moved here to the beautiful city by the lake. That's how we knew it. And the reason we came here, my wife went into end-stage renal failure and we lived just across the Kentucky line. So we had to sell our family farm because we had to be within 20 miles of Vanderbilt in order for her to be on the transplant list. I worked at Peterbilt and I looked in that area around Peterbilt. And I don't know if many of you remember, but in 2000, they still had busing. And when the realtor, we looked at a house to buy, realtor told me where my kids were going to school and I said, "Are you nuts? My kids, they're going to bus my kids from there all the way across the church, Brick Church bike or something." So we came to Hendersonville. We came to Hendersonville because of the schools. Kids had a hard time adjusting. They, they didn't want to leave the farm. But as we adjusted and they adjusted, it was a big change in our lives. And it was a tough time for them. But as we stayed here, we fell in love with Hendersonville. And it was a beautiful city by the lake. We first lived over on, we lived at Nottingham for a little while until we could find a place. And then we moved over on Luna Lane. And then we got a place over on Rebecca. I want to tell you, change is something we all face. Change is something that's not, sometimes it's forced on you. Change is sometimes that maybe you want to happen in your life, but it's still change. And then sometimes it's tough to go through. And I want to tell you, I don't know all the ins and outs and all the particulars of what I heard speak here today. But I know that in 21 years that I've been here on Saunders Ferry Road, nothing has changed. And it's rundown and it doesn't look good. And it's almost like the poorest side of town anymore. It's, I remember driving down Calendar Lane before Indian Lake was here. Y'all remember Calendar Lane? It was beautiful. That was the most beautiful road, I thought. And I thought, "My God, I hope they don't close this road." But they did. I didn't want them to close that road, but I understood why they had closed the road after they opened Indian Lake. I understood that. I didn't like it. And Indian Lake is a wonderful masterpiece to Hendersonville. But Saunders Ferry Road has been neglected. It's been neglected. And I don't know if it's a good thing, a bad thing, or whatever. You people have to decide that. I don't know the particulars. But I know that that part of town looks so sad. It looks so bad. And that's why I support this project. Something needs to be done. We have kicked the can down the road for too many years. We've not, we've not, we've not done anything to this road. There's been no money asked for this year for that project. There's been, even the DW, DW, her, excuse me, DPW director has made requests, but there's been, there's been nothing. There's been talk of a greenway for five years now. There's been nothing. There's been nothing done over there. Something needs to change. And now we have an opportunity for a change. Good or bad, the money part, I don't understand it and I don't pretend to. But we can't kick the can down the road for another 10 or 20 years. Saunders Ferry Road is getting dangerous. Something needs to change. The road needs to be widened. The bridges need to be widened. Something, something has to happen. And this may be a good opportunity for us. I feel like it's a good opportunity for us. Change is difficult. My family went through it. And as a community, sometimes we have to go through it. So that's why I support this. And I hope you will consider to approve and recommend this project. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Kimberly Overton?
Good evening. I wanted to speak once again this evening in opposition of the proposed rezoning of the property located at 216 Saunders Ferry Road, which plans for two six-story buildings with approximately 300 units. As I had stated the last time that I came before you to speak against this development, I truly do not believe that I could think of a less suitable location for this than Saunders Ferry Road or anywhere on the peninsula. I'm against this proposed development for all of the obvious reasons, including the negative impact on traffic, roads, utilities, et cetera, all of which have been discussed ad nauseam. So I will not repeat what you have already heard from myself and countless other citizens time and again. I have been a resident in Hendersonville for the past 17 years since moving here from Boston, Massachusetts in 2004. Now, I say that I moved here, but it would be more accurate to say that I fled from there. Those of us who have quite literally fled from certain northern states know all too well the reality of living under the failed policies and with the consequences of overdevelopment. And we can see the writing on the wall. I escaped the burden of higher taxes, skyrocketing housing costs, unfettered growth in crime and collapsing infrastructure, or at least so I thought. When I came to Hendersonville, I instantly fell in love with its small-town charm. It offered a slower pace and a much more affordable cost of living that would turn my dream of becoming a homeowner into a reality when I was able to purchase my first home on the peninsula here in Hendersonville more than 10 years ago. I understand that change and growth are inevitable. Hendersonville has grown exponentially in the time I have been here, but we need to focus on responsible growth. And whatever is eventually developed on this property should adhere to the existing structure and landscape of the peninsula, in my opinion. I'm not at all surprised that so many people would find Hendersonville to be an attractive community to move to, but we simply cannot accommodate everyone. At what point will certain people realize that we are developing away the very essence of what makes it so attractive in the first place? Quality of life counts. The amount of time that we spend commuting, this matters. Life is short. Please allow those of us in this community to have a voice in that which will so greatly affect our daily lives. The majority of Hendersonville residents have repeatedly and emphatically said no to this rezoning. Please listen. At last check of the petition that has been circulating online, there are over 1,100 signatures added by individuals who are all in opposition of this development. Please consider these voices as you make your decision this evening. Thank you, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak again.
Thank you. Carrie Massey?
My name's Carrie Massey. My wife and I live on the peninsula. I was here last month to speak, and I'll reiterate. That area was zoned, single-family residents, for a reason. And if that reason has changed at all, it has been to make it more imperative that it needs to remain single-family resident. It's already overcrowded. All the obvious reasons for the traffic and so forth that we've stated. But it's zoned that way for a reason. I respectfully disagree with the realtors that it's going to increase the values of our properties there. In the short term, it might. But in the long term, it will be a detriment to the values of the homes there. I encourage you to vote no, disapprove on this.
Thank you. Javelin Cleavitt?
I too come from a high-density place that I escaped here. I loved that road. You guys repaved the top. That was amazing. I also, my house, sure, it's gone up, but I could care less if it goes up further for my quality of life on that peninsula. If this rezoning happens, then that kind of rezoning can happen to any of us. If somebody sells a house, there will be a bunch of skinnies. I, for one, like the peninsula the way it is. I've been watching that property ever since last month's meeting. And it cannot support those many houses. And I'm here to support the wildlife across the street. And to not take up time, I'm just going to sing a piece of a song that coincidentally, ironically, I wrote in that park across the street. And this is just to express my feelings because I'm nervous and that's the best thing I know. And it goes like this. And it's in honor of that park. And hopefully, people who, well, I know, people who live on that peninsula feel this way. Sitting here and looking at the world around. So much love for all my eyes to see. Cranes and fish and birds and ducks and geese surrounding me. And I feel at peace. When I got here, my life was a mess, unclear. Never ever seemed to get things right. But then I moved to a place that they call Hendersonville. And I feel at peace. If there's a piece of heaven, if there's a heaven, I think I have found a piece. So wonderful and awesome, our release. I feel a feeling that is quite so beautiful. It reaches deep and heals my soul. So please don't take that away from the peninsula. He can build out any other place, but it does not work there. Thank you.
I believe that's the first time a citizen's ever sang their speech. And it's on YouTube. See if it goes viral. Okay. That would be great with the discussion tonight, really would be. We are, we are on speaker number 11. So I want to give everybody where we're at, okay? Chris Ratigan.
I don't know how I'm going to follow that. Hey, you got guitar for me? I'm not gonna, I'm Chris Ratigan. I live on Saunders Ferry Road. We went through this already. I'm not going to rehash everything everyone spoke about. Everyone had great topics tonight. Every, everything was pretty much accounted for. Everything was pretty much accounted for. As far as some of the speakers that are for this, I'd like to talk about how $1 million can be used for different things. We're going to go back to an associate of Mr. Lutfi, not his friend that's with him that's taking pictures of all of us out front, which I think is kind of rude and an invasion of privacy. They have another person that was making threatening emails to the mayor. He's also in trouble in New Jersey for doing the same thing to an insurance agent. Basically, it goes back to 2017 when he first purchased the 248 property, 83 Waterfront property. I'm going to have my Danny's Restaurant. We all know about that. He's asked the mayor, please be considerate and try to help us out on getting a rooftop bar. I have... Filling out an application for the Reserve Police Department. I'd appreciate it if you could expedite that and push it ahead because I will be able to help the police department and our great peninsula. I appreciate that, but you don't ask the mayor for a favor like that. I've purchased a pizza place. I had all these problems in my family, my former... My family life. I don't want to get into that. I want to give back. I am willing to put $1 million into the park. Doesn't say which park. I got all of these from the recorder at City Hall here. Mr. Lutfi has included inside of that some emails where I would like to have a meet-and-greet with you, Mr. Mayor, to show us our proposals for the 248 property. That'd be fantastic. Then apparently, when Mayor Clary said that he wasn't for rezoning that property, and it fell through because a bunch of us spoke up, and we're not for having seven buildings, seven stories, or six anywhere on this peninsula from you or anyone else. I don't know what's sadder, the fact that you lost your soul, you sold your soul out, Jamie. My family, if my family ever bleeds by your sword again, it will be me who makes you regret it, and I mean that. Dave Kalika, he's still silent partner involved with their organization. I don't know about you. I'm from New York. I know how the strong-arm stuff works. You don't make threats. You don't make bribes. Think about what money might have been offered to Nottingham to get a second driveway in there, because that's a different management company now, so I don't know. To continue on with that, Mr. Mayor, I hate three people in this world. My mother for cutting me with knives as a child, her boyfriend for coming home from work every day and beating me up, and you for destroying the future I tried to build for myself despite everything I've been through. This is political fodder. You rape people with your words. You're a rapist, Jamie. I hate you. These are the kind of people we want building anything in the city or the peninsula. You're an F-ing a-hole, Jamie. We'll put that there.
Okay, Mr. Ratigan.
Mr. Lutfi saved my life.
I've turned your mic off.
Why? Why? Why not?
You're not out of time, but I want... The emails that you're reading are inflammatory. We get the gist.
Really? I purchased them from...
We get the gist.
They came from the recording officer.
I understand that, but I'm telling you, we understand. We've seen some of these emails.
Have you seen all of them? I have $150 for it.
Mr. Ratigan, please continue and finish your time, please.
About these emails on how Greg Lufki saved my life and invested in me?
Do you have anything about the project itself?
This is about the project.
I am in control of this meeting. Do you understand that? I'm in control of this meeting, and these emails are inflammatory, and I understand the angst here.
Email links of how I kill people is not inflammatory.
I want...
...the character of the company that is coming as a party. I, as a resident of this town, deserve the right to know the character of the people that are building down my street near my home.
Okay. I want to say this to this audience, please. We want to hear comments about this development. The character of the developer, I'm sure, is important. It's important. But also, what we're dealing with here tonight are the ins and outs of what's being proposed. That's our job. That's our job. If there is any kind of email that is against the mayor or anybody else, there are ways for that to be taken care of. Now, I appreciate Mr. Ratigan bringing this to our attention. All I'm asking you is... Let's try to hurry it along, and I'm sorry to encroach upon your time.
Time back, or...
Please.
Okay. So I won't touch on any more of the threatening and pretty appalling things because it's very dark, and it's not something that I don't think anybody should have to deal with, nonetheless, be a mayor or a resident on the block that's paying taxes. What I see going on with everything without touching any more of that is a carrot being dangled in front of everyone's head. We've already established that. I've been in meetings with the Corps of Engineers. I know a couple of the other of us have as well. There's only... One-third of that property minimum is unusable because of core property and drainage issues and the way that pond would come up, the reservoir. The widening of the road is something so far down the road, it's not going to happen. It's a lot of planning, and the Corps owns the dirt and the water on both sides that goes all the way up. A greenway is only going to be a sidewalk from Nottingham to the reservoir. Everything is just trying to look appealing to everyone like, hey, we're going to give you this fantastic roller coaster and Ferris wheel in Mallard Park Point Park. We just left it in there because it's appealing even though we can't do it. I'm a boater. I live on a lake. I know what it's... I don't have to worry about it, but I know what it's like to try to get a boat in the water, and you're not going to have all this amusement park and lean-tos and all this pretty stuff. This isn't the Jersey Shore or Florida. They park boats and trailers everywhere. We know that. We don't have the space for that, and the traffic with just that alone up and down the road is very, very crazy. So the greenway is a carrot. The road's a carrot. And even if you're involved with different partners and this and that, you're still connected to who you are. There was a third person with them over at 83 Waterfront. They held him out to dry and strong-armed him for $250,000 he put into the renovation of that building. They owe Coca-Cola money for telling them they don't have the equipment, which they removed from them. I have people I know that were over there with all of that. He lost... Yes, he lost money there. Thank you for your time. I appreciate everyone else that spoke today.
Thank you, Mr. Ratigan.
Please say no.
Jeremy Mansfield?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Committee. My name is Jeremy Mansfield. I am a District 11 County Commissioner representing Gouldersville, Millersville, Shackle Island portion of Hendersonville, and the Gallatin area of O'Connor. But I'm also here representing my family tonight, who lives at 113 Luna Lane. My elderly parents aren't able to be here, speak on my mother's behalf, and also my sister, who's our caretaker. Our family's lived on Luna Lane since... For 57 years. And I do call it Saunders Ferry, not Sanders Ferry, so forgive me if I do say that. As you can know, we've been here a long time. You know, in economic development, it is imperative for a community to provide a positive, cohesive image by having elected officials be as open and transparent in the planning process, giving citizens a chance to provide input and especially buy-in to potential rezoning that can change the landscape of the community either positively or negatively forever. I dare say there's anything positive for the hard-working taxpayers of Hendersonville or even the county surrounding this rezoning, given the police intervention that we just heard about with threats against the mayor and the overwhelming cry of citizens' voices for you guys to say no. One thing that I want to encourage you guys to understand and citizens to understand is that landowners do have a right to sell their land and a right to develop, but they do not have a right to rezoning. Ternick zoning is there for a reason. The city decided somewhere along the way that zoning fit that area. Things do change, and there may come a time for reconsidering zoning, but it's not a given. And citizens are especially against rezoning when constantly have to raise property taxes around the county or even potentially in the city to pay for somebody else's new growth. Developers knew what this zoning was when they bought it. They do not have a right to change it. Citizens understand that cities like perceived revenues from property taxes. It's mentioned about the carrot dangled in front of the cities. And I say perceived because the mayor of Hendersonville has estimated that for every residential unit that comes into this city, it's a negative $480 towards the city's revenues. You know, and one thing that I see from the county level is that our cities and county need to learn that growth does not necessarily equate to prosperity. In fact, it's been said that growth for the sake of growth is the ideology of the cancer cell. Sumter County marks itself as Nashville's North Shore. In the case of Nashville's growth and its TIF and pilot programs, Nashville has only come to poverty. As of December 2019, Nashville was on the brink of bankruptcy or receivership. The state was about a month or two away from taking over the finances. But Nashville's growing. Now they've passed a massive 34% property tax increase to pay for all that great new growth. As a citizen recently said on Gallatin News Post regarding thousands of new residential units that Gallatin's already approved, if we become drunk with our cities expanding too quickly today, we will be stuck with a hangover of higher taxes tomorrow. One thing that I want citizens to understand, Sumter County does not have a way to pay for each of our city's growth. County officials will try to state that we have what's called an adequate facilities tax on residential, new residential construction throughout the county, including the cities, that is dedicated to funding new school debt. Understand, this is that senior, maybe over 55, it might not necessarily impact schools, but it's important to talk about it because it's growth. And the problem is, is that I went to the property assessor's office and had them pull actual property data between 2015 and 2020. The two property tax increases we got in the county totaling over 38%. What I found is shocking. In that five-year period, the county collected approximately $2.8 million in what's called adequate facilities taxes for residential construction, 2.8 million a year. That same amount of time, the county has indebted every single one of you guys $48 million for new school construction. You do the math on that. The math isn't there. Growth does not pay for itself. So partially, one thing that we call it is an inadequate facilities tax, and you can understand why, because the math isn't there. It's wholly inadequate and servicing a debt incurred for schools because of our city's irresponsible growth. So there is a solution to all of these problems here at the city level. You can simply stop approving high-density developments in overcrowded areas. You have no obligation, in my understanding, you have no statutory requirement to say yes to any rezoning in the city of Hendersonville. You can say no. And so on behalf of my family, I am petitioning you to please say no to this rezoning. And I'll leave you with this in paraphrasing what one of my constituents in the county, Ricky Skaggs, said at a county planning commission last fall, where we were finding something on a new shackle. And he said that, you know, instead of more rooftops, doesn't the city or the county want more happy residents? And isn't the quality of life to be more valued than quantity of life? So that was a theme here tonight, so I urge you to consider quality of life for the residents. Hendersonville's full, Saunders Ferry is full, and the quality of life for current residents is monumentally more important than anything else. And that's what makes Hendersonville a great city. So thank you very much for your no vote on this proposal tonight.
Say it again. Valerie Pantelio?
I just wanted to speak up because I moved here from urban. I lived outside of Manhattan. I lived in New York. I have family in New Jersey, and I moved here to get away from that. I live on Sanders Ferry Road. It takes me 15 minutes to get to Main Street every day. Because of the traffic, I can't get out of my driveway with the amount of parade of cars going to the park. We had been at the initial meeting with the plans, where it wasn't really a meeting. It was basically ask questions, and they shall respond, so a lot of things weren't disclosed to us as residents. In that case, it was expressed how people 55-plus don't drive, which I totally drive. There are issues that with the fire department. You know, you've heard it all, but we're all saying no. We're all saying enough is enough. You know, wildlife alone, you know, if you want to do something with that land across from the park, put a walking path. Put an area where I won't get run over by my... On my bicycle. Just I can't even cycle anymore. It's so bad on that road. We know the Army Corps controls the road. There's nothing they can promise us to do anything. They can't do anything. The Army Corps controls that road. No matter how much money, they could give us $20 million. It doesn't matter. We can't fix it until the Army Corps, and that's federal, approves it. So that we can approve their empty promises, but there's nothing that's going to change. And believe us, we want a pretty community. We want beautiful walking paths. We want places that can be safe to walk at night. And that is not what we see here as residents. It's just, you know, they're not even done with the development next to it, Waterford Village, which is urban reliving in the suburbs, with skinny homes, which if I wanted that, I'd live in Astoria, Queens. You know, I'm here because of nature, because of the beauty of the town, and because of the community and how we all pull together, and our voices are heard, you know? So please listen of what we're telling you. A six-story high-rise on that property, when cars are lined up just to get their boats off the ramp during the most of the months out of the year, where are they going to go? You know, where are the ducks going to go? There's... It's not the space for it. If you want to put 10 beautiful multimillion-dollar homes there that's going to help our real estate value, we all said we don't have a problem with it. But to put multi-unit like that and high density, it just doesn't warrant it. Now, when you talk about how the area looks depressed or it needs a facelift, it's more towards Main Street. Some of those commercial properties definitely need a facelift, and they should be fine if your storefront looks like 1962, you know? But here, where you get into more of the residential area and the recreational areas, I can't take my bicycle at all without getting almost run over. So we all plead. You've heard our pleas before, and that's really why I wanted to talk today, because it's enough is enough. How many petitions? How many voices? How many people have to say no for you guys to say no?
First off, let me say I'm not used to this. So I actually just kind of finalized what I wanted to say, and I will make it really quick. It's hard, obviously, to fill those shoes. I'm just an up-and-coming entrepreneur and lover of Hendersonville, and I'm not as educated on all of the zoning legal verbiage, but I did grow up here, and I raised my children here, and I know what BS is when I hear it. My grandma was the first woman president of the Chamber of Commerce here. She used to do the census when you had to, quote-unquote, "get out of your car and walk across the stream just to knock on the doors of the people that didn't have a phone." She did that just because she loved Hendersonville. She remembers when Indian Lake was a see-through, which I still don't believe her, but she said it was. My child is actually over at HHS right now at Bandcamp, you know? So we're very involved. It's multiple generations. I'm young, but I'm a force. Along with all of the other people in my generation, I have a different concept of the idea of money. And when it comes to voting, that won't be what influences me. It will be based on what I think is right, and a lot of my generation feels the same. All we are asking for is that our vote counts. I know that I can't change the world. My ex actually told me to start with a five-mile radius. He said, "That's actually the best way you can do it." And this is my five miles, and it means a lot to me. And we have enough corruption in the national government, red or blue, no need to add to the actual place that we call home. Bringing innovation shouldn't be at the expense of the livelihood that we have come to expect, and I am opposed to this project.
Thank you. John Evans? John Evans?
Mr. Chairman, committee, commission members, thank you very much, first of all, for the opportunity for all of us to say something about this. And I do want to tell you that I admire the work you do, and I know that often it is thankless, if not most of the time. So having said that, I'm here tonight to represent myself, of course. I live way off the end of Sanders Ferry Road. I drive it about four times a day, and my wife probably drives it three times, which would... would make up the seven trips a day for each household that planning often uses. 300 units times seven trips a day, that's 2,100 cars that this project would add to Sanders Ferry Road. The $5 million that is in the fund, I'm not an engineer, but if we ever did the planning work on Sanders Ferry Road, that may be a 10% down payment of what that road will cost to get fixed. If you fix the road from that project back to Main Street, you still don't alleviate the traffic out to the parks, out to the other end of the peninsula. There's two ways to get off that peninsula, and one of them, the other one is Walton Ferry. So having said that, I'm representing all the folks in here with red shirts on, and I'm representing all the folks that don't have red shirts on, and I'm representing 78% of my neighbors on the Sanders Ferry, Walton Ferry Peninsula. A lot of people have made very eloquent speeches tonight, and a lot of people have made some very good points that I won't go into again. So having said that, I join those 78% of the folks out there on the peninsula in opposition to this program. The people here, a lot of people here and a lot of people still in their houses, they won't come down here and talk. It even makes me nervous to come out here and talk to this group. So I commissioned a poll with a very prestigious Virginia survey company of 275 people last Wednesday and Thursday. I bet a lot of people here got a call, and we asked a few questions. And 78% asked their alderman and the mayor to vote against this project, 78%. It's not your job to worry about the politics. I get that. That's BOMA. You're interpreting their ordinance. So I'll confine what I'm saying to the parts that do apply to you. 74% of these folks do not want you to recommend this tonight for the reasons that we've already heard, lack of infrastructure and impact on the neighborhood and the culture. 58%, no, let's see, 75% say no to rezones of any kind until Sanders Ferry is improved. That was a question. 78% asked BOMA to vote no, as I've already mentioned. 75% believe no rezone at all until, from single to multifamily on Sanders Ferry Road, regardless of whether the project is done or not. And as some of you know, I did polls back a year ago and before election, and those same polls had a great negative toward any kind of additional multifamily rezoning. We're just full. Even Hendersonville's own planning ordinance says, passed in, I think, 2020, the city will soon reach buildout. Well, we're almost there. The only way we can go, if we build out, is to build up. And if we build up, my great concern is, first of all, the traffic, and the purpose of this ordinance says lessen or reduce congestion in public streets. This stuff's just the opposite. It's not going to help that. But what I'm worried about more is our culture. And I think I've mentioned that to several of you, and I know I have BOMA. But our culture here in town, a lot of people have already said that, talked about the culture. Your ordinance says preserve and maintain the essential character of the city as it exists as of the date of the adoption of this ordinance. I think that was 2020. Correct me if I'm wrong, please. The other one says prohibit uses buildings or structures incompatible with the character of the districts in which they are located. I would much rather see swing sets, sandboxes of kids in the neighboring yard, and bicycles around the neighborhood, instead of seven stories, straight up. And I believe that's much better for the culture of our town. You can see our culture changing. The people that responded in any way positive toward this project were those who have lived here the least amount of time. So I submit to you that if that's not evidence of our culture changing, I don't know what is. So the more people we concentrate and the less space, the more our culture will change, and the more we'll see a difference in the Hendersonville I moved to 28 years ago. And I just like to ask you to think about, if you've been here very long, when you drive down Main Street, or any other street for that matter, have you noticed the aggressive driving? Have you noticed the lack of magnanimous behavior when people are operating cars? Have you noticed that they want to get there before you do? It doesn't matter if they clip your corner on your car, they want to get there first. Our culture is changing. The volume of traffic, the sheer volume, creates an aggressive attitude among folks. If you don't believe it, drive to Nashville, you'll see what's happening down there. So what I'm asking you to do is consider our culture and our traffic and our way of life as you consider this project, and please vote no on this. Thank you.
Stan Williams. Stan Williams. Thank you. Martha Harper.
Hi, you.
Thank you. Jason Yount, or Young. Yount.
I'm at 115 Edgewood, a little nervous. It's been a while since I've been up in front of a bunch of people. Thought I had to work today, but I had the chance to get up here and get some stuff done, so I've got a bunch of notes I'm trying to get out of my envelope here. I'll get there. Everybody's made some really good points tonight, so I'm not going to hash on that and try to stay with them my time. You said not to really mention density, but if you look on the Walton Ferry Peninsula, there's 12, like, places for high density. On the Indian Lake Peninsula, I don't see any, 12 to zero. It's just like everything gets dumped off in my peninsula. My family's been there 42 years. I'm not born and raised here. I came here in ninth grade, left right after high school and went off to UT, and came back 10 years ago, well, 10 years, 13 years ago? My dad had cancer, so I came back to take care of him. So the one thing I wanted to mention that I don't think anybody's talking about is the thing that the developer has in their findings of fact, which seems like a lot of findings of opinion, their opinion. So the one thing that bothers me is this proof of concept. They wanted to fresh-take on high density. There's nothing fresh about high density. It's high density. We don't need it. You know? They also said that single-family homes and that type of, and that type of development is a waste of property. Well, like I said, I've been here a long time, and Mike's girlfriend lived out in Castilian Springs on a farm, and she said it was quieter at 115 Edgewood than it was in Castilian. Think about that. Do you want to let that go? I don't. I wouldn't even be here if they weren't going to, like, try to rebuild that thing where Saunders Ferry Pizza used to be, and it's going to be seven stories tall with a tiki bar and a pool and all this stuff. And it's like, do y'all remember when Piranhas was down there? Do you want Piranhas seven stories up in the air, booming all over the lake in my neighborhood? I sure don't. So, so I got involved with that, and so you guys shot that down, and I was like, okay, cool, this is all done. Then this thing showed up in my mailbox. Not only is that ugly thing down there at Saunders Ferry Pizza back on this thing, there's this giant housing project-looking thing over here across from the park, which is now Six Flags Over New Jersey. This goes all the way out into the middle of the lake. I mean, are they trying to market this to the people like you guys who are trying to escape? Because they're going to be in for surprise when it's not here and it's a bunch of rednecks and boats, you know what I'm saying? Anyway, the, it just, it just kind of concerns me about the proof-of-concept thing. They're wanting to, it feels to me like with what's being proposed, like where Saunders Ferry Pizza was, the greenway in between the two to the condos, so it feels like you got condos here, a greenway down to their retail, restaurant, rooftop, tiki bar thing, and I'm starting to feel like they're wanting to build the gulch down here on Saunders Ferry Road. If you want to go down for that mess and go get drunk, take an Uber. We don't want that here. I really don't want that. I don't want any of that down here. The other thing, this proof-of-concept that they said was, if you build this, this will prove that you can build more of these on this peninsula. Where? This is like a balloon. You keep putting water in, it's going to pop, air. There's no more room. Nobody wants this. Nobody. I like my nice, quiet neighborhood. I don't want this gulch thing down the street from my house. I don't. It's not good to Saunders Ferry. Everybody's already made the points. If we get the right road widened before I turn 90 years old, that'd be great. I'd like to see that. Oh, by the way, I'm 56 years old, and I've been in my car driving all day long. So to me, this just feels like, you know, they did a traffic study at the height of COVID, and like I said, people over 55, they give up their cars and they don't drive. This just feels like some out-of-state developers coming here to cash in on Nashville, being Party City USA, like everybody else is, and we don't need it up here in Hendersonville. If you want to keep Hendersonville the way Hendersonville is, you know, if you want to go down to the gulch, move downtown. We don't need that up here. So for the love of God, vote no. Thank you.
So Terry Backus, or Backers?
He's gone.
He just left.
He just left? Okay. 19. Okay. Jessica Sanson, or Janson, I'm sorry.
Hi. Again, thank you again for giving us an opportunity to speak. I did actually write it down this time, but I'll kind of skim through. I'm going to start by saying the last time that we were together, I was really disappointed to learn that after each of we had, we had all spoken, the big takeaway from the developers was that our one commonality was traffic. And that's, not that that's not true. It's a long, skinny road, there's nowhere to go. That's not the main commonality. The main point is we don't want it. We don't need it. We can't handle it. People drive the way they do up and down Saunders Ferry Road because we let them, because there's little consequence for speeding and passing and shoving people off the road. An extra lane is just going to give them more room to do so and do it a little bit And I'm going to go on to say that I, you know what? Yes, it's an old peninsula. But as far as how the peninsula looks, once you get past the commercial side, y'all, those are your neighbors' homes. I'm a home health nurse. I took care of a lot of people on that peninsula. If their homes look rough, go be a neighbor, help them out. But, I mean, I got my 14-year-old to go pick up sticks for neighbors. He's okay with it. But, I mean, what is, what is the ultimate plan? I mean, we build condos. These are two of four. It's not going to stop with these two. So we just, the peninsula gets old, so we just keep knocking all the old stuff down, putting up new? Because that's where we're headed. It, it won't stop. And I also want to clarify something from the last round that, oh, you can all hear me shaking, sorry.
Just speak up.
Right? Shake all the way back through the beginning. The last time we were here, a comment was made that the city has taken years to fix the Walton Ferry Main Street intersection. That's not the city's responsibility. That's the state. They own the highway. Ditto, I mean, it's not the state for the greenway. That goes to federal. If y'all ever seen them do something real fast, you let me know. But, but, and what exactly does that have to do with this project? Probably absolutely nothing. It's merely to bring attention to the manipulation that we've seen over and over again regarding this project. We keep getting information and half-truths in the hopes that we are none the wiser. The project was designed unsafely, which should not have been a surprise to developers and designers. It was not a surprise to them that you had to have a second exit, that you couldn't get a fire truck around the building, that the fire trucks didn't reach the top of the buildings. Instead, instead, we filed for variances to build something that was ultimately, in the end, unsafe. And to me, that is not anybody who has the best interest of people in this city in mind. And then I do have a few, a couple of questions that I imagine will be answered. So I understand there's two parking garages to each building, and so I'm curious how many parking spaces are available to each unit? Because since we've established that people over 55 most likely drive, I'm going to assume that especially since we're planning three-bedroom units, that there will be more than one car to each unit. And I'm wondering if they all fit in that garage? The second thing is, is everybody in Tennessee knows that if you plan to dig anything into the ground, you have to blast to do it. I live on Cumberland Shores, and I can feel blasting from Old Hickory every day. So my question is, when everybody's foundations have been adjusted, when their walls are cracked, when their doors don't close, who is on the hook for replacing that? Because I had my foundation assessed, and there's not an estimate under $20,000 to fix my foundation. And I sincerely doubt that they're going to want to give people money to fix the foundations of all these houses built on piers. And when I did ask, I did ask one of them about that the last time I was here, and they said that if they did need to blast, they would do so, but within the blasting limits. Y'all help me with that one, would you? Look, fireworks, we all just came back from that. You could feel those shake in your house. I'm pretty sure blasting into the bedrock's going to rattle a house or two.
We're, we're, we're out of our time.
Okay, that is just fine. And I'm good. Thanks for listening.
Eric.
Thanks for everyone for being so thorough, and you all have some amazing faces.
Thank you. Jay Lawrence.
Hi, you.
Thank you. Candy Webb.
My name's Candy Webb, and I live on Sanders Ferry, and I've been here 30 years. I spent 20 as a journalist here in town, so I'm not used to speaking. I'm used to writing, so excuse me. I'm going to take y'all in a whole different direction. Everybody's made real good points. I've got a few points that haven't been made, I think, and I want you to think about them. It was zoned for a reason, when there were far fewer people on that peninsula, and the zoning they chose was for single-family homes. That's the overlay. We have many, many more people on the peninsula now, and you're being asked to rezone it. I don't think that's right. We already touched on the police and the firemen. Here's my question. The developer's talking about, what, $1 million to help improve the road, widen the road? I'm not a contractor, but my guess is $1 million is barely going to touch it, barely touch it. Now, you drive, all of you just drive up Sanders Ferry Road one day. I've done it a bunch. By the way, I'm 64 and retired, and let me tell you, when you retire, you drive a lot more than people under 55. So I'm up and down that peninsula, I think, eight times today. So let's talk about that road. He's going to give $1 million to fix that road. Get a hard study. You're the planning commission. Refuse to do anything until you have written data of estimates on what that'll cost, because I promise you, that $1 million is not going to touch it. So get an absolute accurate number. Don't take it from the developer, because obviously the Corps of Engineers has to be involved, and as a journalist, I dealt with them. Good luck. Good luck. Now, you drive down that road, you've got telephone poles two feet to one side, you've got water on both sides. We're not talking about flatland where we're asking the developer all that $1 million or just make another lane. We're talking about moving poles out into the lake, putting them underground. We're talking about building up so we can have a lane. There's no room to put other lanes. How are they going to widen the road? It can't be done as easily as they want us to believe. I'm not an engineer, but I know they have engineers, and they're well aware of it. I also want to challenge the planning commission. For years and years, I've covered you, and you do a great job, everybody that's been on it for years. But Hendersonville's becoming known as the place that you buy it zoned for this because it doesn't matter. You got enough money and enough stand-up and give a presentation, and you all, not you particularly, any planning commission here, will change the zoning. I think you need to send a message not only to this developer, but to all future developers that come into Hendersonville. You're not going to come in here and buy something zoned for this and then bully us into doing what the residents don't want. Let's send a message that you are going to hold the zoning as it is unless you can see it's going to benefit the city. And I don't see one benefit to this development, not one. And who's going to get stuck, right? They're going to build their thing, we're going to suddenly realize that his $1 million isn't going to change the roadway at all, and who do you think's going to get stuck paying for that improvement? The taxpayers. We're going to be left with the bill while developer sits in New Jersey collecting his money, because that $1 million isn't going to touch it, but you- money. Because that million dollars isn't going to touch it, but you and the board will have committed us to putting a whole bunch of new cars on the road, and we taxpayers are going to be stuck having to take the exorbitant cost on of fixing that road and widening it. And I want you to think about that. Don't say yes when you don't even have a number on what it will cost, so that his million dollars comes into actual, this is what it is, a drop in the bucket. Get numbers before you ever agree to something like this, please, I implore you. I take seven to 10 trips a day. Retirement is rough. I'm on that peninsula all day long. And I can tell you that if you let this happen, it's going to be chaos. Chaos. Until he says, here's how much it'll cost to do the road, and here's the check, and here's the bank that'll do it all, because that's not going to happen. Please don't put us on the hook for this road to be widened, because that's what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Eileen Cole? Eileen?
I'm going to make this short and sweet, because I have to go pick up my son, but I haven't heard much about the apartment buildings that are right behind where they're wanting to develop this high-rise. I live right off of Hickory Heights Drive, directly connected to Sanders Ferry, where the Lake Deville apartments are. And I have to worry enough about my three-year-old son wanting to run out into the parking lot, let alone having to worry about, yes, the traffic that will be added upon both sides of that street. Not only that, I have anticipated that, I feel they have pushed out Sanders Ferry Pizza and Pub from that. That is a very well-known establishment among all the residents in that surrounding area. And as soon as this development was heard of, I saw them start to pack up and move from their location they were at. Now, given, after they moved, I could tell that it did need some development. But outside of that, the feeling I've gotten from this development ever since I heard about it is it pushes the people away from where they are living. And not only that, it concerns me about the fact that I may raise my rent in my apartment building. And it's already high enough as it is. It is hard enough to find a place to rent under $1,000 around here, especially that it's not the size of a house. So, not only do I disagree with the development for the sake of my son, I live directly behind where they're wanting to put this. And it brings, raises all kinds of eyebrows and concerns. Pretty much what everybody else has said here tonight. So, that's my main concern. Thank you.
Grayson Leith?
I try to keep this short as well, whatnot. One thing I want to say is basically if, let's just say that the road got widened, and everything got built and this and that by miracle. I feel like that will bring other developers. If you build it, people come. You know, who's to say that it won't be something else? It'll be just constantly moving its way, choking us out, just like Eileen said. And as well, everybody else has made fantastic points. I just think it is just, basically, the developers are sitting up here and just doing a magic trick. Try to put some type of prestige, try to put something together. And, and I don't think we're taking it really good at all. I really hope that this committee just votes no. And hope that they don't see an opportunity for somebody to float the bill, even though it doesn't sound like it's going to be much money at all. I do agree with, it does need some type of change, but not to this magnitude. It's nice to have something that is up and coming, don't get me wrong, but this is just too much and whatnot, especially over this weekend, where we saw a Fourth of July like we didn't see in a long time. And I can't help but think, well, that could be most of the summer at this location. And I live right behind it as well, obviously. Anyway, I just disagree with this, and I hope that you do too. And say no to rezone.
Frank Napolitano, or is it Franny?
Frank.
Frank, okay.
It's usually my last name they struggle with, so, good job on that, but.
There was another, there was another line on the name before you, so I don't know what that was.
No worries, no worries. So, as, as the chairman said, my name is Frank Napolitano, and I'm relatively new here. I'm very new here to Hendersonville. It's not even 90 days yet. And I want to start by thanking the chairman for.
Welcome.
Thank you. I want to thank the chairman for, for the opportunity to speak, and, and members of the, of the committee for, for their opportunity to listen. And that's really what, as public servants, what, what we have to do at these public hearings. And it's not always comfortable. I've sat in your seat. I was an elected official for 12 years before escaping. We'll get to that briefly. But it's not always comfortable to sit in that seat and to listen. And we don't always like what we hear, but, you know, it's important that we hear from the residents, especially at a public hearing. So, thank you for, for putting up with that. And like we heard from a few other transplants, maybe I'm a little more recent than them, but I also escaped. I escaped Chicago, so another suburbs, but, you know, I escaped one of those other areas that likes to, you know, be progressive or look at progress and additional developments. And they're not always good, right? So, we've heard a lot about that. So, when we decided to move to middle Tennessee, I have an aunt that lives in Cookeville. We'd come down a few times to visit her. So, I kind of got a little bit used to middle Tennessee. We had visited Nashville a few years ago, and kind of fell in love with the area. And then we needed to decide where in middle Tennessee we wanted to live. And we evaluated a few communities. We looked in Wilson County. We looked here in Sumner County. And then we debated between Mount Juliet and Hendersonville. Mount Juliet's right on the other side of the, of the lake. And we decided on Hendersonville. And then when we decided on Hendersonville, we decided, you know, we had to evaluate where in Hendersonville we wanted to live. And we loved both peninsulas. We ended up settling on the Indian Lake Peninsula. I know you've heard a lot from people that are on Sanders Ferry and how this will impact them. But it's going to impact everybody in this town. It's going to impact people on both peninsulas. It's going to impact people on Stop 30. It's going to impact people on Saundersville Road. It's going to impact people on Old Shackle, New Shackle, all of them, right? So, and I know you said you don't like hearing a lot of the same things, but unfortunately, you know, there's already many multifamily developments on Sanders Ferry Peninsula. We've heard that. It is extremely densely populated today. It has some great recreation that people from all over Hendersonville and the surrounding area come to, right? Try and make a left from Main Street onto Sanders Ferry Road on a Saturday in the summer. I've only been there three months. I know, forget about it. There's three marinas, multiple boat launches, a great park at Sanders Ferry Park, several restaurants. One of them got relocated as part of this, unfortunately. And all this brings more and more traffic to the area. The traffic isn't only an issue on Sanders Ferry. The intersection of Sanders Ferry and Main is extremely backed up, as I mentioned. Try to make that left, you know, on any given weekend. The development dollars Mr. Lutfi is going, isn't going to resolve this. 300 more condominiums or apartments, it's only going to make it worse, not better. And, and the extra money is only going to put a slight dent in the problem that's already there, but they're going to make it much worse with the additional houses. So, how does this potential development help the residents of Hendersonville? How does it improve our lives? What residents have spoken out in support of it? Very few. And, and, you know, obviously, we heard, Mr. Ratigan read several letters of, of support and threat about this. But other than that, we're not hearing a lot. A few people spoke in support, but not many people are speaking out in support. The development doesn't make sense where it is proposed. It does nothing to improve the quality of life for the residents of Hendersonville, and I encourage you to vote no on this rezoning request. Thank you.
Thank you. See, is it Charles and Janice Smith? Am I saying this right? Are they in the other room? Okay, we'll move on. If they show up, we'll, we'll come, we'll circle back around. C. Covington?
I've lived in Hendersonville for about 25 years now. And although change is inevitable, too much change is a really bad thing. When I came to Hendersonville, I thought it was the most beautiful little town I'd ever seen. And I have watched it turn into a Rivergate, a Nashville, an Antioch. I travel Saunders Ferry all day. And the traffic is horrendous. I was at the very first meeting at the Lighthouse, and I have a big mouth. I'm, I'm okay with that. I say what I feel. And when I talked to this developer, I said, "When will you fix the road?" Because if you're having two, three bedrooms in these units, that's a lot more cars on our road. And yeah, I know, the traffic thing has already been talked about, but it needs to be addressed. Period. His response was, "After the units are filled." Those were his words. "After the units are filled." So, no.
You.
Okay.
How are you?
Okay. Well, who we have here, we had like telepathic thing going there. Vladimir, Vladimir Zook?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Vladimir Zook, and I'm living in Hendersonville for four years. And let me start my word with the question, why nobody build chemical and cement plants close to the river and lakes? Anybody? No. Okay. Because God created lakes and river, rivers, for recreational purposes. We should have bicycle roads, walking paths, restaurants. But what we have there, I came from this city, 5 million citizens, and I know what that means. 5 million people in 30 miles radius? 1 hour 15 minutes for 7 miles. We want it here? It's a big question. Also, I'm from the country where the government not, never, never at all listened to public. And here, I have a privilege to say no to this rezon. And I think for this privilege, and why it's so easy to you say yes to this? Because it's not your neighborhood. Nobody built apartment close to your property. But we're living there every day. Try to pick up your children 3 o'clock from the school and try go left from Main Street. 10, 15 minutes, go left. We're living there every day. And we're here to say no, because we're living there every day. Maybe you visit this road maybe once a year, twice a year. We're living every day. And we're here to be heard to say no to this. Thank you.
Yeah. I think we got the message. Charles Smith, are they here? I want to make, give them one last chance before we close this hearing. Okay, I do not find them here, so I'm going to declare this hearing closed with one caveat. Ms. Berry, I know there were a lot of emails. Why don't you give a synopsis of all that before I close the hearing?
Thank you, Chairman. We received several public comments via email for this hearing, all of which have been provided to the commissioners via your digital packet or the email I sent out this afternoon. Here is the breakdown of what we've received. We've received 35 total emails since the June 1st meeting, for a total of 102 total emails received since the project was submitted on May 3rd. We've received 20 total duplicate emails, of two or more emails from the same person, for a total of 82 individuals speaking to the project. 78 of those comments recommended denial, and four recommended approval of the proposed project. Also included in the packet was a link to a petition from the surrounding neighbors recommending denial of the proposed project. These items will be provided to BOMA should the project move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. So, having heard the public now twice, we're going to declare this hearing closed. And the next item, a matter of business is a request for information and assistance. Is there anything that the commissioner's asking? Hearing none. We'll move on to additions to the agenda. Hearing none. We have the minutes from June 1st, 2021. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Move to approve by Vice Chairman Silkwood and Mr. Altizer seconds. Any discussion? All in favor? Just go ahead and say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Abstain.
I mean, Mr. Hasty abstains?
I abstain.
And Ms. Longmire abstains. Okay. We have the final plat with Fountain Brook Phase 2, Section 2, and they've requested a deferral. So, that's granted. Move on to the development plans now of the Sanders Ferry Adult Living Community and the land use amendment that we need to do, and the character of the changing of the land use plan. Let me say that to the commissioners, we're going to have to have two votes here. And the first vote is on the land use plan itself. And that will require, with the present configuration, six votes. Am I correct, Chairman? Director free? For it to either pass or what, or fail or whatever. It's going to require six votes. And I want to start this off in a few moments, but I, I did promise that I would allow the applicants to speak. And the next part of this particular, part of this meeting now is about the planning commission doing its work. We have heard from the public, and we thank you for those comments. But now it's time for us to hear from the developers. And then the planning commission will carry out a series of two votes. One on whether we authorize the amendment to the land use plan, changing our, our land use plan to accommodate their rezon request. And then the second one is, of course, obviously, is the rezon request itself. So, with that, Mr. Cook, are you, are you speaking for the group?
Actually, Mr. Lutfi is going to start tonight.
Okay, Mr. Lutfi?
Mr. I agree with my opinion.
Okay. Thank you. All right. And, and folks, once again, I would like to just please encourage the, the audience here. These people have listened to our comments, the comments of the citizens, and now they deserve the right to be heard without interference. And I would appreciate that. So, please, please introduce yourself and welcome to the planning commission.
Thank you. Hi. My name is Gregory Lutfi. I'm the owner of 216 Sanders Ferry Road. I want to thank you all for listening to us last month, giving us a deferral and a chance, as you suggested, to tighten things up, be more descriptive of what our proposal is. And again, I thank the commissioners that we did have conversations and discussions with. So, there's been a lot that's gone on in the last month. And I just want to state for the record, Daniel Kaleka is not associated with this particular project. He is not an owner. He is not a partner. He has no involvement in this project. His actions, he has done are on his own accord. His views and opinions are not the views and opinions of me or my business. Okay? Okay? So I want to get that straight. We made some changes to the last submission. As some people have said, we've taken it down a floor. There was some height issues or concerns. We've also listened to a lot of people we spoke to, obviously, traffic and safety. Okay? Is the main concerns that we heard. We're not developers that want to come in here and build something and run away and make our money. Okay? That's not our intent. We want to come and develop the property and make it better for everyone. Okay? And I'd like to go through our proposal that's on the table to the board, to the commission, exactly explaining the breakdown of the last meeting. We said we are giving up to $5 million back to the town in these road improvements, improvements to Mallet Point Park and as a development fee to the town. Okay? And I just want to address a couple of comments that were made. You know, people over 55 don't drive. The intent there was people over 55 don't drive during rush hour. Okay? Okay. Well...
Once again, folks, please, please let him speak. Order.
Sanders Ferry Pizza was not pushed out of their site. Actually, I was there today and I had pizza. And I spoke to Eddie, who's been a great tenant of mine for the last few years. And he is happy, he's bought his property, he's got a bigger place. And, you know, he's going to thrive there. So it's not something that, you know, we did bad to him. It's actually a good thing. And he agrees. So I want to take it through a quick presentation. Where is it? Okay. Do I have? No. Don't click. Okay. Thanks. Can you put it in slideshow mode, please? There we go. Thank you. So last meeting, we said we're going to give upwards of $5 million to this, as part of this project back to the town, which includes a development fee of over $1 million. Sanders Ferry Road improvements, $3.45 million. And Mallet Point Park improvements, $450,000. And I'll take you through the detail of each one of these. Development fee is something new in the town. The last couple of projects, developers have given anywhere from up to $3,000, $3,500 per unit. Okay? We are offering $3,500 per unit back to the city, which goes into their general fund, which they can use at their discretion. Okay? We are suggesting that they, suggesting that they use it in Sanders Ferry Road Peninsula and any other improvements that they see fit, other than what we've had here. We talk about traffic improvements, okay? The biggest problem is Sanders Ferry Road and Gallatin Road, okay? Coming off the peninsula. Okay? What we've done is, by the way, we've, before I go through this, we've met with the, with Marshall Boyd, the DPW Director. We did a virtual walkthrough of the whole road from Hickory Heights down to Main Street. Okay? And looked at everything, not only that the traffic study recommended that we do, but basically what he's been trying to put into the budget or has met with, you know, the Ward Alderman on how can we make this road safer and handle more traffic. So at the end of the road, there's, we're going to improve, we're going to add a lane. So when you're coming off the peninsula, there's going to be a dedicated left-hand turn lane. The middle lane is going to be a right or left lane, right or left turn lane. And the right lane is a dedicated right lane. So we're going to be adding lane at the end. Okay? If you notice, at the end of the road, the water comes right up. There's fill that needs to be put there. There's retaining wall that needs to be put there to support the road and everything. Look, we know, we were talking to the Corps. We know this is not an easy thing to do, to get approved. But they are listening to us, okay? They know that there is a safety issue on the peninsula on this road. That's been neglected for years. Okay? Also, they're going to modify the timing of the lights on that intersection to help people come in and out. Imperial Boulevard, what we're proposing is a three-lane road from Imperial Boulevard all the way to Main Street. Okay? Which would be two lanes and a center turning lane. Okay? In most cases, we're taking the right-of-way. In some cases, we're looking at putting shoulders, okay? Widening the road to 12-foot lane wide where we can. And then on this one, will be three lanes wide. Traffic study also suggested we have a southbound right turn lane into our property, into our development, which is certainly no problem. So with all these improvements, there's going to be a new road from just north of the gas station all the way to Main Street. Okay? New paved road, curbing, striping. There's parts of the road that go, that have water on both sides. You're going to say, oh, how are they going to widen that? Well, we, the plan is to build it up on the sides, build retaining walls, make it wider. Okay? And this has been already proposed to the Corps on how we would do that. Okay? As far as safety improvements, as I said, we're looking at two 12-foot travel lanes, shoulders, guardrails. In some cases, when we get to, oh, the retaining walls, as I said, on the bridges. Where we have the bridges that go over the water on both sides. Okay? We're going to be, since we're building up the walls to make the roads wider, there's going to be a pedestrian walkway. It will also double as part of the greenway because right now your greenway specifies a floating sidewalk, which this would be a much better solution.
What did the Corps say in 2000 when you approached the Corps? I want to know what the Corps said.
Excuse me, excuse me. Excuse me. Excuse me. Please.
Thank you. We are also proposing to work with the utility companies where we can to bury the overhead utilities. As you know, we'll be digging up the sides of the roads, putting in the fill. It's easy enough to put in that conduit for the utilities to be buried. It benefits the town by, I'm sure, people lose their electric every time there's a tree that goes down or a car that hits one of the telephone poles. There's also concerns that came to us as far as the site distance on, just at the intersection of Cages Road. There's a big hill there. People coming out of Cages Road want to make a left on Sanders Ferry going to Main Street. There's no site distance, you can't see. We're looking at different ways to resolve that issue, either by grading or providing more safety, blinking light or some kind of alerting system that cars are coming, something like that. So again, working with, you know, the DPW Director, we estimated this around $3.5 million, give or take. This is much more than what was, he proposed in his budget. But again, this is, we're trying to correct or fix 40 years of catch-up in the infrastructure here with the roads, the bridges, and as you will see, the parks. So Mallet Park, we're not building a amusement park there. Okay? So please get that out of your head. It was, it was meant as an attention grabber. The, we met with Andy Gilli, the Parks Director, okay? He shared with us the master plan for the parks. Okay? We had a few of these bullets on our list. He gave us more that were in the plan that he'd like to see there. Fishing pier, ADA compliant with paddle boats and possibly kayak rentals. Revitalize boat launch, resurface and paint a parking lot. Restrooms with water and electricity. Playground, park benches, walkways. We also said two open-sided structures for, with electricity, for potential vendors to sell something on July 4th or snow cones on the weekends or whatever. And also, there's a lot of, someone mentioned, you know, the grade of the property. So there's fill that needs to come out of our property. And we could fill the park and grade it so when it rains, it doesn't flood. Okay? And build up the coastline with riprap as suggested by the Corps. Okay? So there's a lot of good park improvements. I heard someone say, we want a place to walk around, bring the kids, you know, push a stroller. Right now, Mallet Park is a, basically a boat launch with a sign that says it's a park. Okay? So I don't know anyone that wouldn't want a park like this, you know, near walking distance from their house. We estimate this to be about $450,000. The greenway, so we talked about the development fee, okay? Which is just over $1 million. We're suggesting that the town use that money for their, or a portion of that money for their portion of the project. Okay? I know from the budget that just got passed that this, the greenway was approved. So that money actually can be freed up and reallocated somewhere else. So that's another, another benefit there of money freeing up. I just want to take it through real quickly, there's only a couple of slides left here, of the progression. So originally, we suggested 347 units, seven floors. The height was where it was because we had gabled roofs. Okay? People said, you know, we want to make it look nice, you know? So then we had to bring the height down. So we took all, we made it flat and we lessened the number of units. That was a... And then the next iteration, we took a floor off. And we kept the number of units the same, which lowered the height. Lowered the floor, which lowered the height. People are saying, well, how do you keep the units the same? Well, we adjusted some of the square footages. And also, in the first two stories are all, were all meant for garages. So we're going to be putting in townhouses on the first two floors of those. So we were able to keep the number of units the same. Last meeting, a couple of days before the fire, Commissioner came in with a couple of his requirements, which we, you know, were, had a, weren't able to satisfy by the time of the meeting. One of them was a second entrance from Connie Drive, which we have, have an agreement with the Nottingham that they will allow us for an emergency gate there for fire entrance. One other thing I'd like to note that we didn't, that was requested that we do, but it wasn't really a requirement, but we're accommodating it, is providing a walkway from Connie Drive on the other side all the way to Sanders Ferry. Okay? So people on the other side of that existing fire gate can come through and walk and have access to the lake and the park. Okay? That's all I have now. I'm going to turn it over to Marty. Oh, one thing I do want to say and answer another comment is, you know, they're saying, well, why don't you build single-family, $1 million single-family houses there? So would anyone here want to pay $1 million for a house that's right in between two apartment complexes?
Okay, once again, folks, let the man, let the man speak. Let him speak. Let him speak.
I get more than five minutes, I'm sorry.
Folks, please listen to me, please. It's time for the commission to do their business, and we need to hear from the developers. We've been very patient in listening to the citizens' comments. We appreciate your comments. But we need some decorum here. This is tough issues that we're dealing with. It's very emotionally charged, I understand that. I live on that peninsula. And I've been there a long time. So it affects me too. Okay? But let's let these people do their presentation without comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the commission. I said this last time, and I'll say it again. I think if there is one thing that everyone on this board, that everyone in all of these rooms can agree on, there's probably not much, but there's one thing they can. And that is, traffic is an issue on this peninsula. The condition of the road is an issue on this peninsula. And so the question before all of us as citizens of this community is, how do we fix it? What's the solution? How do we get there? Under the last proposal that was approved for this property, it would have allowed 128 units with zero contributions of development fee or two road improvements. And so this is the opportunity for a public and private partnership to get both a private development and public road improvements as part of one project. And it's, it's, it's an opportunity for a solution. It's more units than the last one was approved for. But at the same time, it comes with substantially more improvements and more positive things for the community. The community as a whole and the peninsula at Saunders Ferry. So that's something for us to consider. As Mr. Lefty said, since the last meeting, his team has worked extensively with Mr. Boyd in his office, with Mr. Free in his office in trying to do the things that this board asked them to do last time they were here and coming back with more specifics about the road. And Mr. Hager will address the engineering side of that as to after those meetings and after Mr. Boyd's communications with the Corps that go back even predating this project as to what improvements would look like in that corridor. And that is where these suggestions and these proposed contributions come from. And that is where these suggestions and these proposed contributions come from, was a result of those meetings and that cooperation between public and private, which is what, what, at, at this point, it's going to take to get something of this magnitude done on this peninsula. And again, to address that issue of, why not single-family homes on this plot of land? Well, if you look at the overall land use, and you look at what is flanked on either side, and then you look at these renderings, that is what fits in with this area. And, and, and that is what, over the years, has, this has been the area where multifamily has been approved by these bodies and others to, to, to sit. And it, it, it's part of the overall community and the overall feel of that community, and if allowed, would fit in with the surroundings on, on both sides. And, and the proposed building looks very similar to what is already there, just more modern. And, and again, it is an age-restricted community, which, if you look at it from a planning perspective, what a community like that allows, and I believe someone in the real estate business spoke earlier tonight about how popular those communities are becoming, and that is because it enables people who are 55-plus, who don't want to take care of their yard necessarily anymore, to move into a community like this, have a condominium, and then, that frees up their home for families who are coming in, who are looking for single-family homes. And so, if you look at the cycle of residential development and growth, that is how it can, it can make sense, it can free up inventory, which everybody knows is, is an issue in our city right now. So, at this time, I will turn it over to Will Hager, who is our engineer, who can talk about some of the particulars in his discussions over the last few weeks with the various departments, and how they worked together to come up with this proposal for how the road can be improved. Thank you.
Good evening, thanks again for having us. My name's Will Hager, I'm Associate Vice President with Lowe's Design, I'm the planner for the project, and happy to bring this updated packet to you for consideration. Would like to clarify a couple of things that we heard from the public hearing. The, the traffic study was conducted by KCI. They conducted those counts in May of 2021 with some additional background data, so that's the basis of their recommendations. So, I don't want people to feel like we did this in the middle of the winter, or something like that, when we really were in more of a lockdown mode. Just a point of clarification there. And, let's see, the second thing was that I would just like to call attention to some of the findings of facts, that was also mentioned by a previous speaker. We looked to your current land use plan for some of the larger goals that the community has, and tried to find ways that this proposal would speak to some of those goals. The one that really stands out to me is that, when this was, when that plan was adopted, Hendersonville did not want to be seen as a bedroom community, they really want to be a self-contained city. You've got a lot of those assets currently, and a development pattern that complements adjacent properties and multifamily developments along this corridor helps you fulfill one of those goals. But with that, I would like to answer any questions you have. Timothy's been really great, as well as Marshall, to help us nail down some of the details. We were able to revisit the unit count and the building height to maintain a total count of 299, but lower the building to meet some of those previous concerns.
Okay. Well, let me ask you a question. Will, are you, are you, are you asking for questions now?
Absolutely, if you, if you're ready for that.
I was, I wanted to make sure you're ready for it.
Sure.
I'm sure the other commissioners will, but I will, I will start. The unit count's gone down, talk to me about parking.
Yes.
I understood that the parking garages essentially went away with the, so where, where will be the parking now for these cars?
We still have, we still have covered parking on the first two floors. We've wrapped that parking with townhouse units, so...
Okay, okay, so, so, once again, please. So, that you've wrapped the area with townhomes in the, it's in the middle, is what you're saying?
Yes, yes. So, similar to a lot of buildings you'll see with covered parking, you don't want that exterior wall to just be a blank facade, so we've provided units around that.
So, what will be the counts on the spaces in there?
Two spaces per unit.
Two spaces per unit?
So, typical for developments of this type.
Okay. So, it's going to be two spaces per unit at 299 units, okay? It was mentioned that there's been some discussions with the Army Corps, and it's been mentioned several times about the, the lightning speed they have. But can you talk to us a little bit about where those discussions are right now? And secondly, do you have at all a timeline of what we're looking at here to make these improvements? And, you know, all the improvements sound good, but I'm just asking, how many years are we looking at here? I know it's a loaded question, but we really need to understand that.
Well, I can definitely speak to the process.
Okay.
And this is the first step in that process. Before we, before our clients turn us loose on redesigning that stretch of road, they need to have their entitlements in place so that they can make that investment, because that's not an insignificant cost. And if, if it's a $5 million project, you know, 6% to 7% of that is going to go to design fees, so that's a significant cost, right? So, this is the step one. Now, part of that design process includes permitting and vetting through Army Corps of Engineers and the City of Hendersonville. And in some of our discussions, I think Timothy may have that paperwork, we've tried to identify those roles. Obviously, it makes a lot more sense for the city to help coordinate some of those permits, while our client does some of the design and that investment in the construction. Same's true for the Mallard Point Park improvements. The private sector can take care of the design and the construction, and then turn it over to the city to own and operate and maintain, and oversee vendors the way they, they would other properties. So, that's how we've approached that.
That's fine, please. Can you, you want to go to the microphone, please?
In my discussion with the Corps, so, the city leases Mallard Park from the Corps, okay? So, the city would need to submit those plans and those, permits to the, to the Corps on our behalf.
Right.
Okay, so, as a private developer, I cannot submit to the Corps. It's the city that needs to do that. And the same thing for the roads, okay? We could provide all the engineering and every, you know, funding for that submittal process, but the city is the custodian of that.
Everything, with everything that you've mentioned, can you, the figures that you've provided for us, is that an adequate budget to do all the improvements necessary? And if, if it is, how far out are we looking at the, for that budget to be? Because we know costs are going up.
We, we feel that the budget that we provided will provide the improvements that we spec-ed out, okay? If the Corps, you know, throws in some curveballs, or you gotta do it this way, you gotta do it that way, you know, we, we've, we've had, we've had some, you know, we have, if it determines to go over $5 million to $5.5 million, I mean, it, it's, we can, we can negotiate on that. It's not, it's not a, a figure like that, that, so, yes.
So, the answer is really, there's, there's no way to, I mean, you've, you've given a good faith figure, but it's, it's hard for us to know.
We, we've consulted with subject matter experts to estimate what each of those improvements is going to cost.
Right, okay, thank you.
Okay. The Corps said, the Corps said it would take up to a year for them to give approval.
Okay.
From them, if we submitted today.
Are there other commissioners that have questions? Or the developer on, Mr. Ingell?
You may have already answered this, but it's just a lot to take in. So, so with the Corps, I understand that for Mallard Park, but what about for the road? Would it be the same? You would have to wait until the Corps provides information before you can start on the roads, too?
Yeah, I, I think the, the roads are a little bit more complex than the Mallard Park ask of the Corps. That, that's the indication they gave me.
Thank you.
You mentioned there were two parking spaces per unit. Are all of those covered, or is the two spaces per unit total parking? Which would be a mix of covered and uncovered?
So, we have a total of 642 parking spaces provided, so we actually have a surplus. You've got covered parking to address most of the units, and then you've got the parking lot between the two buildings that will be open for guests and others as needed, so...
So, some spaces will have two covered parking, but some spaces may not? Or is it just first come, first served?
For, for the most part, all the units will have two covered parking spaces, okay? There'll be an overflow if they want to purchase, if there's any, like, for instance, a one-bedroom may only want one spot, okay? And they may want to sell their spot, or they can, if there's additional spots, they can rent them, or there's also the outdoor spots for guests and, you know, that are open.
To, to be more specific, we have 322 parking spaces in the large building. We've got 223 in the smaller building to the west, and then we've got 83 in between, and looks to be 14 kind of on-street parking along those townhouses. So, it's conveniently located, most of, most, every unit will have a sheltered parking space, at least one, and then we'll have some overflow in addition to that.
The, I'm assuming that both buildings will be sprinkled?
Yes, they'll have to be to meet, and, and meet all the fire codes.
I may have missed this in the packet. Is there, have you guys done some preliminary site design for the park improvements?
We have not at this point.
Just being someone who has used that as a boat launch, it gets real crazy with trailer parking.
Right.
I'm not sure you can do the improvements and still have a boat launch. But, anyway, that, that's all I have.
And again, the park improvements were kind of summarized in coordination with Mr. Gilly, with the Parks Department.
I understand.
So, those are where the ideas came from.
Thank you.
Yes. Mr. Lufy, thank you for the $5 million for road improvements. Well, it's, it's five, well, give or take $5 million. But I've looked at, I'm an alderman from Ward II, newly elected, newly appointed to this commission, so I'm very naive. I've looked at conservative estimates to repair Saunders Ferry Road, which is, what is it, three and a half miles? The conservative estimate is $40 million. And, and I've seen figures that go up to $60 million. So, roughly, that's $11.7 million per mile. So, with all respects, sir, you'll only pay for a half a mile. But, and, and I have a question for you, Mr. Hager, please. I, I was looking at the plans. I'm not an engineer, but I approve plans and specs with my job with the state, and I have some concerns about stormwater, drainage. The six and a half acres is all going to be covered up in concrete and pavement. Where's the rainwater going to go? I, I'm afraid all this, this water drains down, and that goes directly across the road.
If you look at page 2.05, it'll actually show the proposed permeable pavement as well, in addition to the bioswells at the eastern end or the front.
Well, there's a lot of pavement, there's a lot of concrete, and there's, I'm concerned, a condo just collapsed in Miami, and I'm afraid of water, groundwater, spring water coming up underneath these giant concrete pads. I'm just wondering where the water's going to go. I don't want the water to cross over Saunders Ferry Road, which is already the second most dangerous road in the city, according to accident reports from the, the police department. So, I'm just thinking environmental risks, I'm thinking of flooding issues. You're already talking about Mallard Point Park is flooding, and you've got to fix the shoreline. Well, I'm afraid all this runoff is going to exacerbate the problem. And I just wanted to, to make that point clear. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Are there any other questions by commissioners? Ms. Longmire?
So, I have a, a question about, and I'm, I'm assuming that this has been corrected, but I want to know. When you took off the top level and, and brought it down to six stories instead of seven, the height of that is 63 feet, is that correct? So, I want to know if, if our hook and ladder that we have in Hendersonville now will reach the top floor. And the reason I'm asking this is that I was a commissioner when Hickory Bay Towers, and we approved that, that was a five-story, and the city ended up having to buy the hook and ladder in order to be, to reach the people that might be in, on the fifth floor. We were a little naive when we did that, but that's what happened, so, has that situation been addressed?
We, we did lower the building to, to meet some Shane's concerns, but this construction of the building will also address those fire issues as well. So, you'll have sprinklers that Mr. Hardwick referenced, you'll have fire-separated walls where you need them, and you'll have fire department connections to help serve that building.
Okay, so maybe I need to ask Shane. Well, the, well, the hook and ladder that we have now allow you to rescue someone on the sixth floor.
So, I would need more information on the distance from where we're setting up the ladder to the building, which I requested in my comments. The area where we would be able to position the ladder, then you have sidewalk grass, et cetera, et cetera. But I just want to say that with that, when we are doing a rescue, we're not going to rescue from the top of a building. We're going to come in that stairwell and get you. That's, that's our operation. With what they're showing, and if they do meet the parameters that I require, we shouldn't reach the top of the building. But with that, that's never how we're going to operate, most likely. You don't want us pulling you off the top of a building. Most likely, we want to find you in a stairwell, and two of our big, strong guys are going to grab you and take you down the stairwell, so...
I understand, but I know that there have been times when you can't go up the stairwell. So, I'm just saying, in a worst-case scenario, all I want to know is, can you reach and meet the requirements that, whatever it is that the fire department has to, to do, so that we don't end up buying another hook and ladder truck in order to...
So, if they meet the requirements that I'm asking, the 15 and 30 rule, which means that we can't be 30 feet away from the building and no closer than 15 feet of the building. And if we set that ladder up at a right angle, which I've showed them, we should meet all the parameters to reach the top of it, yes.
And we provided your turn template on pages 210.
Thank you. Ms. Longmire, are you getting any more questions?
No, not.
Thank you. And are there any other questions from commissioners? Okay, Mr. Boyd, talk to us a little bit about the, your name's been mentioned several times on this particular project.
Yes.
So, I want to give you a chance to talk to us a little bit from your perspective as a Public Works Director.
Sure. Take you back a few months, when I was preparing my budget for this next fiscal year, I included money to improve Sanders Ferry in, in the range of $600,000. Before I did that, I, I did reach out to the Corps of Engineers and just asked a simple question. If we were to widen Sanders Ferry in, in areas where it's narrow across the water, would you be agreeable to, to do that? Now, there was nothing in writing, there was, it was just a phone conversation, but I, I wanted that initial conversation, just to make sure that I was headed down the right path, you know, before I asked for money from the... path, you know, before I asked for money from the city leaders to move forward with the project. Now, obviously, they were agreeable with that. They said it will, making the road safer, I think, would be a benefit to the community, to the Corps. They, unfortunately, that money was not approved in the budget, but it was, it was asked for. And again, they had mentioned that we had met on several occasions, talked on the phone several times, went through the entire corridor of Sanders Ferry, and identified improvements at key intersections and along the entire stretch of what we thought would it would take to make that a viable, you know, project viable, given the money that they're willing to contribute. You know, like I said before, we've, my first time doing this, we've never had anyone offer to, you know, to give $5 million towards a corridor to improve it. So it was a kind of a new experience, but nonetheless, we've met about it and talked at length, and then tried to identify those key intersections where improvements are needed.
Okay. So are there some, a soft set of drawings that are in the Public Works Department that would tell at least the Board of Mayor and Alderman?
I mean, there's, there's aerial imagery of the corridor showing where we think improvements are needed, but as Mr. Hager mentioned, you know, until the engineering further analysis is done, you know, and those questions are answered, it's hard to nail down exactly, you know, what's, what's needed. And for me, I'd want that to, before, you know, I made any final decisions, would want to see that as well. You know, of course, that would come further in the process, but.
Right. Thank you. I'm not seeing any more lights here on my screen from any of the commissioners. So having done that, what I'd like to do is, you know, a lot of times, I will, I will just let it float out there for a little bit, and then we'll weigh in. But I'm going to go ahead and weigh in now, and I'm going to be testing the will of this commission here in just a second. But, you know, I have been on this commission a long time, and I have watched this city grow immensely over the years. And we have had some hard rezones in this city. And they weren't pretty sometimes to go through, but they, nonetheless, we went through them. But I have thought about this project a lot, not from the point of me being a resident back there, but from being on this commission for so many years and doing the work of the city as chairman, and of course, as a commissioner for so many years. The one issue that I simply still have a struggle with, and I'm like Mr. Peterson, I'm very grateful that we have a developer that would even broach the idea of a $5 million into, into our city. That, that is a lot of money. But the Old Town designation that you're requesting, in no, in no committee room, when they were drafting the Old Town plan, was there any kind of premonition that we would be entertaining 1 to 46 in density? That is so far over the top of what is presently there on the Sanders Ferry Road corridor, Walton Ferry Road corridor, and even what's, what's new, Aventura, Aventura, the newer ones that have gone up, that'll be going up in other parts of the city. Now, that's not to say that change can't be made in that, but that is to say that right now, we have a ordinance that kind of tells us how many units you can yield per acre. Okay? And in this particular zoning director, Free, you might want to help me here, it's 17?
15.
15. It's 15 under this zoning, under the Old Town?
Without a waiver.
Pardon me?
Without a waiver.
Without the waivers, 1 to 15. So there's quite a variance, and, you know, as, and I speak to this as a commissioner to our board members, we've granted variances before. We've done that many, many times, and they've been for good reasons. And I'm proud of the work that this commission has done over the many years in seeing this city develop. And I think we want to see it develop more. But I like the way the building looks. I'm not against the over 55 living. I think that is a niche that is on the horizon that's here, that is very, very marketable. And let's face it, we're there, the boomers are there, and they're looking to unload properties. We're seeing this all over the place. I'm in Nashville quite a bit, and I've been in the Gulch. I've been in Nolansville and all the areas that are building up. So I know, I have a good feel of what's going on around middle Tennessee. And as one commissioner, I just don't feel like, under the present constraints of this particular proposal at 1 to 46, on that premise alone, I don't know that I could support that density. But I, I would say that if there was a project that came before us that was within the right densities, this board would have a hard time not approving something along the lines of 1 to 15, because, once again, the findings of facts say that we have to prove that it would adversely affect the area. And so that's my opinion on this, and I'm going to go, I'm going on record now. I'm prepared to test the will of the commission, but if there are other commissioners that would like to speak on this as a whole, I want to give you that opportunity now, and then we will proceed. So I would welcome any of your comments now, commissioners. Anybody?
I might speak.
Ms. Longmire?
I'm never shy to speak. One of the things that bothers me is, I've, I've worked with the city for many, many years in many, many different ways, and I have seen a lot of things happen that people didn't think would happen. The voting part of the, of our process that we have. So one of the things that bothers me is to change the zoning for a specific project and have that project fail. And I have seen that happen. And then you're stuck with that zoning, which might have been wonderful for what was originally planned, but may not be what is good for the land in the future. So that, and I don't like variances. The board knows this. Every time we get a variance up here, I've got something to say about why I don't think, I think if you have to have variances all the time, you need to go back to your books and see if you can't correct what it is in there that's making you have to give a variance. It's kind of like telling your kid, you can't do so-and-so, and then you say, they come and say, well, can I do this this time? And then you have to say, well, yes. And then the next time, you have to say, no. And then they come back to you and they say, well, you let me do it when I wanted to go to Suzie's or whoever it was. So I, for that reason, I raised three children, and I think they all turned out pretty darn good. So that philosophy follows me with a lot of my decisions. And I am in the real estate business, so I have some advantages that some people don't, or maybe it's a disadvantage, but to me, it's an advantage. So I'm concerned about changing the zoning for a specific project to something that we've never had before, and never made this change like this before. And then if it doesn't go through, we need to think about whether or not that's what we want in that particular area.
Thank you.
That's my comment.
Okay. Out there. Any more comments, Mr. Coker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to kind of follow along. You gave some history of your perspective here on this board, and I appreciate your service here, Ms. Longmire. You've spent many years on this board as well. I'm a newbie to this group. I've been on here since March, I think, April's first meeting. Really like what you're proposing on the road, but what I, I've just got this feeling that it's a distraction. What I wanted to hear tonight, that I did not hear, is a two-simple test. One, why is this the highest and best use of this property to rezone this? And two, how does it benefit the city of Hendersonville as a whole outside? How does it make Hendersonville a better place to live? I haven't gotten satisfactory answers to that. To overcome, to overcome what you're asking us to do, you're asking us to grant a rezoning to Old Town Residential, does not contiguous to any other Old Town residential. This is equivalent of spot zoning, and just with that, I can't support it. I appreciate the effort that y'all put forth. I appreciate you working with that, but that's just what it comes down to for me.
Okay. Are there any other commissioners who wish to speak? Well, I don't see any lights on the board. I would like to, I would entertain a motion, if we look at your agenda, the first thing we're going to consider is, of course, the, the land use plan amendment, character change area from suburban living to Old Town. I would entertain a motion that would suggest that we would deny the proposed change because of what Mr. Coker has mentioned, that it is not contiguous to our Old Town zoning, and that we would deny that change. And I would entertain a motion to that effect, if anybody would like to make that. Ms. Coker?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Ms. Silkwood. Any more discussion? All right, hearing none. No board, no lights are on the board. Ms. Berry, call the roll.
Altizer?
Yes.
Coker?
Yes.
Hardwick?
Yes.
Hastings?
Yes.
Longmire?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Silkwood?
Yes.
Stringfellow?
Yes.
And Jenkins?
Yes.
That's all nine.
Okay, thank you. So that is not changed. And then the next one that we're going to go to tonight is the actual vote for the rezone. And with that one, it requires defining a fact, and once again, if somebody would like to make a motion, we have denied the land use change, but I am prepared to offer what I would consider to be a motion, if Mr. Hasty or somebody wants to make a motion to this effect. Mr. Hasty?
I'm prepared to make a motion, but I'm kind of, opinion that we need to see if there's going to be a motion to approve, because if a motion to deny fails, what happens? But I am prepared to make a motion to deny. Okay? But I mean, I don't want to make a motion to deny, and all of a sudden, my motion failed, and we're in a bind.
Well, Mr. Hardcastle, if you, whatever you would like to do, if you want to make the motion, we could, I can continue to talk here for a little bit and.
Okay. I'll make a motion.
Give you some findings, I'll give you some, we have to have some findings of fact, and those findings of fact, if you want to look on the back of your page 16, and this is important, we have to have specific findings. This gives the Board of Mayor and Alderman the reasons why we are not proposing, recommending the approval of the rezone.
You have to have findings of fact.
And they're on the back, so.
I agree, but one would be sufficient, I believe, if we had that.
Yes, sir.
All right. In my opinion, the size and design of this project is not compatible or consistent with the existing built environment on Walton's Ferry and Saunders Ferry Peninsula. Number two, I think the variance request are way in excess, particularly the density that I would be, I'm like Mr. Coker, I hadn't been here long, but I would be receptive to reasonable variance requests, and I think that's just over the top. I think the transportation infrastructure cannot accommodate this increase in traffic. Now, I know they did a traffic impact study, and the purpose of an impact study is to mitigate their traffic on the existing transportation network. I think they fall, they fell a little short, but I just think the overall infrastructure cannot handle a density that generates that many trips on that project. You know, and in general, I believe this project will create a negative value on the resources of Hendersonville. You know, it'll impact traffic, it'll impact our fire department, it'll impact our police department, it'll impact our building and codes department, and it will even impact our planning department with them having the responsibility of monitoring and enforcing the plus 55-plus. You know, and I think for those reasons, I would move that we recommend to the Board of Mayor and Alderman to deny the rezoning and the development plan.
Thank you. Proper motion, proper findings of fact. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Altizer. Are there any more comments to be made by the commissioners, any more discussion? I see no, no more lights on the board here. Ms. Berry, call the roll.
Altizer?
Yes.
Coker?
Yes.
Hardwick?
Yes.
Hastings?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Longmire?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Silkwood?
Yes.
Stringfellow?
Yes.
That's all nine.
Okay, both of those are denied, and so. I need, if I could have order, please? Now, let me tell you what happens now. The applicant has the right to appeal our decision. It's a recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman. It will go to them, and most likely, it will go to the General Committee first, and they will hash this out in their General Committee, and they will either bring it forward to the Board of Mayor and Alderman as a recommendation to approve, or a recommendation to deny, or they'll, sometimes they even bring it to the Board of Mayor and Alderman with no recommendation. So the planning commission's done its work, and now it's time, this moves on to the Board of Mayor and Alderman, and they'll do their work. And I would like to thank you, the citizens, and I would like to thank our applicants for a well-done presentation, and I would like to thank you for a well-thought-out plan, and I hope that we can find somewhere that we can do something like this in the future. But with that said, we're going to move on with our agenda tonight. Thank you. We'd like to ask if everybody would kind of, so we can finish our meeting real quick here. Director Free wants to go get some ice cream.
It's melted.
Okay, guys, let's go ahead here. If everybody could take the conversations out to, out to the outside, please, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. If we could have order, please? Thank you. All right, we're going to move on with the agenda tonight. We're moving on to the site plans of the Dobson triplexes, and Grant, you've got this one?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a site plan for 12 units at 216 Walton Ferry. This is allowed in OTR, and we went back and forth on the site plan for the last couple of months, and site plan's in order. They just have a few remaining comments, and the applicant has agreed to all the staff comments.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Do we have a motion to approve with all staff comments? Mr. Altizer makes the motion.
Second.
Second by Ms. Silkwood. Any discussion, any questions for Mr. Green or the applicant? Hearing none. Ms. Berry, call the roll.
Altizer?
Yes.
Coker?
Yes.
Hardwick?
Yes.
Hastings?
Yes.
Longmire?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Silkwood?
Yes.
Stringfellow?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
That's all nine.
Okay, we're moving on now to the KWSA accessory building and parking lot site plan. Timothy?
27 Ferry Road. It is a 1,000 square foot accessory building to be added at the rear of the existing building. And they have agreed to all staff comments.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve with all staff comments. We have to approve by Ms. Stringfellow. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Longmire. Any questions?
Just a quick question. Can anyone tell me what the proposed use of this building is?
Mr. Whitten?
I believe it's going to be a storage for the office that's located in the main building.
Anything else? Okay. Any more questions? Hearing none? Motion, we've got a, a motion and a second. Ms. Berry, call the roll.
Altizer?
Yes.
Coker?
Yes.
Hardwick?
Yes.
Hastings?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Longmire?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Silkwood?
Yes.
Stringfellow?
Yes.
That's all nine.
Thank you. Staff level projects that are approved, that's passed, by the way. Maple Row subdivision, Lot 20, final plat amendment, ME Boren's property final plat, staff level projects that are pending, Martin's Barbecue, exterior renovation, Michael Archibald, Lot 9 and other. We have a zoning ordinance text amendment and readoption of building materials. And Timothy, give us a synopsis of what we're doing here and refresh the commission why we're doing this.
Okay. So this is sort of an emergency set of amendments and readoptions of sections of our zoning ordinance dealing with building materials. So the recent state legislature passed a law that did kind of four basic things. They said your ordinance may not prohibit building materials. They said you must provide a waiver process for any restrictions that you have on building And then any adoption or amendments of ordinances related to building materials that you act on has to be pulled out separate from any other ordinance. And then this law takes effect September 1st. So in order for us to get our ordinance into compliance with that state law, we've got to amend the ordinance, any ordinances we have that expressly prohibit any building materials, and also readopt any ordinances that speak to building materials. And we have a short deadline, or a short window timeframe to get that done before that deadline expires. So the two, the two documents that you have, the, there's these two right here that have the highlighting on them, they say the same thing, but they're just presented in a different format. This one gives you a, the current ordinance on the left side, and on the right side are the proposed amendments and/or sections that need to be read adopted as highlighted. And then this document just pulls that same thing out and categorizes them according to what needs to be amended and what needs to be read adopted. And then you should also have a copy of the ordinance that will ultimately go to BOMA. So that's, that's my summary. If you want to go into any of these particular changes, we've, we've kept the changes to the absolute minimum necessary to meet the intent of the state law.
I guess the best place to start on that, I would guess that the changes are minimal in terms of verbiage, that it does not change the intent of the materials, but strengthens it. Am I correct?
It, so there are, like I said before, anywhere where it prohibited materials, such as metal, CMU block, all that was deleted. We can't have that anymore. We do have still in place our recommendations or preferences for preferred materials such as brick and stone. All that stays the same. It's just that raw prohibition has gone away. In some cases, instead of just deleting the prohibition, we've said your vinyl siding, in the case of residential, or aluminum siding, it's permitted, but it's only permitted up to 10%. So it's kept it to a very, it allows it, but it's at a very minimal level. So strictly speaking, it's not prohibited.
Okay. Any questions for Timothy on this, this document? Good read, by the way, so.
It was a good read this afternoon. We've been here a long time, so I don't want to take a bunch of your time. Can you just quickly say why the state did what they did? And I'm assuming the answer is no, but
Lobbyist. There you go. That's key.
Yeah, what it was, it was from our understanding, it was the vinyl siding lobby and the Home Builders Association that pushed it through. But we're not crazy about making these changes. It, it does lessen what we've had, but we feel comfortable that these changes are the minimum changes that could be made, that our ordinance will still be upheld. A lot of communities are not going to hustle and get this done, and all of the different things they have about materials will be challenged later probably. But here, I think with these changes, and if we get it done by the deadline, get it approved by BOMA before September the 1st, I think we'll be able to withhold any potential litigation that could come up. But it does lessen, lessen a little bit of what we have, but like I said, we're not crazy about it, but we just, it's something we just, we have to do.
So we can say, we can't say, you can't have vinyl siding, or you can't have metal siding in the case of a commercial building, but we can say you can only have just a little bit.
Yeah, we can
And we still, we still okay then.
We can, one of the other things, the state law says that you have to provide a waiver process, which we've, we've always had, the planning commission did, the, you know, any of the design guidelines, which includes building design standards, landscape standards, those are all design guidelines, which anybody can request a waiver for any of those, and the planning commission can hear those. So we've already got that waiver process in place for, you know, if somebody wants to not do the preferred materials.
Great, thank you. Timothy, I got a question. In the industrial areas, for example, I know a lot of times we push pretty hard back about, you know, not giving metal, you know, having more of a finished siding, more, you know, brick, prettier sides in those industrial areas. Is this going to push us harder?
Well, it, I mean, we are, we do allow quite a bit of metal siding. The only thing that we require, we do, we do require brick and stone on the front.
Right.
This does, all this does, again, it just takes that, that raw prohibition out of the equation. It's still, the, the ordinance says you need to provide that, that brick and stone on the front. So, I mean, it, to be, to be honest, it does, it does kind of weaken the base on which we stand.
Yeah. That's what I read.
But this is, this is the minimum we need to do in order to, we think, keep our ordinance as intact, our design guidelines as intact as possible.
Okay.
I would note just one thing really quickly, that accessory buildings over 400 square foot that are in the rear of a residential area, previously those were limited and couldn't be metal, but because of this, that we changed the language just to make it where it needed to be complimentary to the exterior of the main house. So that is significant, that is a significant difference, but there really wasn't, there wasn't a way to really tiptoe around, around that.
Okay, hold on one second. Ms. Coker, or Mr. Peterson, you guys are in the queue. We'll come back to you, Ms. Longmire, I'm sorry.
I just had a real quick question for the director, Specialist Eubrode over there. Very short here. Just wanted to know what the calculus was to decide on 10% was the minimum that you could do instead of maybe 5%.
You know, we discussed this in the planning office with the staff, and we looked at this, and, and really we felt like 10% was, was a legitimate, where if it was questioned, that we were at least giving something, where we talked about 5% or even 2%, but we felt like that was almost a de facto, like a prohibition, where 10% was, you know, it was that we were allowing some. And like Timothy said, we are given the ability to do a waiver, and we're being, we already had waivers allowed, but we've made it very clear in these changes. That's a good question.
Mr. Peterson?
Is there still a market for metal recycling? Why are they being discarded? Shouldn't they be recycling that? Isn't there a market for metals?
There's a huge market for recycling, especially metal, so.
So why isn't that being recycled instead of dumped?
Are you talking about metal siding?
Yes.
I mean, I, I think that the, I, I, to be honest, I don't know about the recycled content of metal siding, if all, if most of that, if some of that's recycled or not. Is that what you're driving at, is the?
Yeah, maybe I'm reading too much into this, but I just thought, you know, it could be diverted and recycled instead of, is this being, is, is this vinyl and metal siding being thrown in the, in the landfill? Is that what this is about?
No, no, no. What it, what this is, is I think it was something done to intently where they were discouraging or prohibiting, particularly vinyl siding. This is, I think, the reason it was done. But the problem is the way it's written, which oftentimes happens when state legislation occurs, it's written in such a way that it's not just vinyl, it's materials.
Right.
You can't prohibit materials. So metal really, it just happens to be, in our community, we prohibit a lot of different metal type sidings and vinyl. So that's, that's where it's having the impact. But I don't think it was targeted toward metal. It was really targeted toward vinyl siding, but it, but it includes all materials.
Oh, I see.
So every material got the benefit to have more of a fair stand, a choice.
Okay, thank you.
Can I say one thing? I come from the plastics industry, okay? And with that being said, the, the vinyl industry is, has been impacted very negatively by these kinds of boards, okay? And they have put up one huge fight lately, okay? And that lobby has successfully gotten to the legislators, okay? And now they're getting their nose back in under the tent. That's what they're doing, okay?
Ms. Longmire, I'm sorry.
He pretty much answered what I, wondered why the state's doing this, so it's the lobbying.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we have the resolution for us. It's ordinance 2021X. I'm, hopefully, commission's okay with me not reading this whole thing? Please say you're out of that. So you have it before you. Do I have a motion to approve? Ordinance 2021X.
Move to approve ordinance 2021X.
Second.
Second by Ms., first by Mr. Altizer, second by Mr. Peterson. Any more discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Berry, call the roll.
Altizer?
Yes.
Coker?
Yes.
Hardwick?
Yes.
Hastings?
Yes.
Longmire?
Peterson?
Yes.
Silkwood?
Yes.
Stringfellow?
Yes.
And Jenkins?
Yes.
That's all nine.
Planning director comments?
It's going to be fast, believe me. Okay, so.
And Sue, thank you so much for sitting through this meeting tonight.
I will, I will say
You are, you're enjoying this?
That's right. See, I'm going to blush, but, but
He's speechless.
But I tell you, my wife, my wife of 25 years is here tonight, and I really appreciate her. She's here tonight, but honestly, she's with me wherever I go. So she's, every time I'm here, she's here, she's got my back, and believe me, she's, her and my family all know what it is to work for the government. And so she's, she does a great job, and I appreciate her support. And thank you very much for being here. I appreciate that. I just had a couple of real quick things. We're in the process of hiring a new position in the planning department, GIS, GIS, Geographic Information System Technician, and that'll be basically somebody that'll do computer mapping for us. So this is going to really be a good opportunity for our planning. We're really looking at a focus, our focus over the next four years is going to be mid to long-term planning. So we're really, this position is really going to help us pursue that. Also, we, we have just finalized a request for proposal for our West Main Old Town Redevelopment Plan. We're negotiating right now with, with a consultant, and we're hopefully to get that resolved here next week. And we look forward to moving forward with, with that planning document. Also, we've hired a new sign enforcement, part-time sign enforcement officer, Oswaldo Herrera, and he's doing a great job, and we appreciate him, his addition to our staff. Also, the economic development coordinator, Rod Kirk, he's moved back to the executive department, so he no longer is, is in the planning department. We wish him the best, and the planning staff have really enjoyed working, working with him. Also, the urban growth boundary, we're working with the, with the other cities in the county, in Sumner County, to kind of clear up some lines and fix a few things. Nothing major, just some minor cleanups that we're working on the next couple of months to that. Also, Marshall Boyd, just wanted to, to let you know that I think Friday is going to be his last day. We, we're sorry to lose him, but he's going to be nearby. He's going to be the county engineer for Sumner County. So we certainly appreciate the working relationship we've had with him and, and just the stellar job he's done and the, the high character of a person that he is. And so myself and the planning staff just really appreciate him and just wish him and his family the best. And that is everything that I have.
Marshall, thank you for all your work. We appreciate it so much. And with that, I would note that our director's a smart man by saying all those things to his wife. Ms. Stringfellow, do you have a motion?
Second.
Second? All in favor say aye. Aye.